Thomas Paine. Sam Adams. Benjamin Freitlin. These men spoke up for what they thought was right. From their courage came such documents as the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. From their willingness to speak what was sometimes unpopular but right, we enjoy such liberties as freedom of speech, the right to keep and bear arms, and freedom of religion. There are those who still wish to oppress our freedoms, and there are still patriots willing to stand up and defend life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Men like Zed Bell, who honor our founding fathers and what they stood for. It's now time for Zed at the Ranch, speaking up and defending your freedoms. Brought to you by Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and all of the other great advertisers on the program. And now, Zed Bell.
One of my very prized possessions is a book called God Bless America, called Prayers and Reflections of Our Country, and it was given to me by some very dear friends, Fred and Joyce Preston. And I read a quote out of there this morning from former President John Adams. "It must be felt that there is no national security but in the nation's humble acknowledged dependence upon God and His overruling providence." How true. Good morning, everybody. Here comes Kate Smith, and God bless America, followed by a patriot with our pledge of allegiance. Come on, somebody call in this morning. Good morning. Oh, I tell you, I never tire of listening to that song. God bless America, Kate Smith. Thank you so much. Good morning. And what happened to the sun? What happened to the sunrise? Holy smokes, a little cloudy out there. Zed at the Ranch. I'm Zed Bell with your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers as our major sponsor. Thank you to them, all seven locations. And of course, don't forget some of our great advertisers, like Western Way Services, always at your disposal. Get on the route service, 734-6969. Let's go to the phone line. Good morning. Who's gonna do the pledge?
Well, good morning again, sir.
Uh-oh. What's that? Well, you know what happened to our audience not giving the pledge? We've gotta stimulate those people again. That's a burden on you, young man.
Well, and that's the thing, I don't mind doing it. I just kick out of doing it.
All right. Well, we've gotta spread it around, but you can do it again today. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Sounds good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done, my friend. Thanks, Wheels. We appreciate ya. Hey, it's time for the weather right now, brought to everybody by Cheney Flooring and Home Design. 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look for the blue door. I'm telling you, they've got all your new flooring, tile, wood, carpet, lots of different varieties and colors to choose from, and it will increase the value of your home. Hey, please stop in. Cheney Flooring and Home Design, wonderful people, whatever you need to make your house a home, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley, and look for the blue door. Right now, here comes our weather gal, Gina with the weather.
It's Tuesday, March 8th, and this is what our weather's gonna look like for today. Partly cloudy skies, little bit on the breezy side, winds out of the southwest, right around 12 miles an hour. Expect a high of 51, tonight low of 35. More clouds rolling into the valley in the overnight hours. That's gonna leave us with cloudy skies for tomorrow, high of 54, with an overnight low of 38. And then warming up for Thursday and Friday, partly cloudy skies, slightly breezy highs are gonna be in the mid-60s. Yesterday's high was 51, the overnight low was 30. That's your weather for Zed at the Ranch.
Very well done, as always. Thank you, Gina. Brought to everybody this morning, as it is every morning, at 8:06 when we sign on. Cheney Flooring and Home Design, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look for the blue door. Call them, 267-869-45. Hey, don't forget Thursdays are sale days at the Burley Livestock Sale Yard, 1100 Occidental Avenue in Burley. Number to call for consignment information or sale information, 678-9411. Merv May, Cade Rogge, Lance Udi, all of them at the sale that works for you. Thursday means sale day at the Burley Livestock Sale Yard, 1100 Occidental Avenue in Burley. Really good, folks. I've got a couple of notes here. This one was called into me last night amidst many calls that I'll talk about in just a moment. The, I got a call that the Cassia County Farm Bureau, they sent out invitations to their annual banquet like two weeks ago, and a lot of people haven't got 'em. And they said, hey, if you haven't got your invite for tonight's Cassia County Farm Bureau Annual Meeting at the Burley Best Western Inn, starting at 6:00 PM, call the Farm Bureau Office for tickets. They'll have them on kind of a will-call basis at 678-0431. 678-0431. And they're gonna be giving out awards tonight for the Farm Woman of the Year, Deanna ought to win that one, and Grand Farmer, yeah, the Grand Farmer Award, and the Young Farmer and Rancher Award. And guess who's gonna be speaking tonight? A good friend of ours, Senator Kelly Anthon's gonna be speaking at the Farm Bureau, Cassia County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet tonight at the Burley Best Western. Calls are welcome and appreciated, 436-2244-1866-9274587. Deanna and I were talking after the show yesterday, and we said, whoa, what happened? Did everybody sleep in yesterday in the first hour? So prove to me that you're out of bed and give us a call. We'd love to hear from you. Don't forget Daryl's Cleaners at 1223 Albion Avenue in Burley. I've gotta go pick up my clothes, and then I've gotta drop off more rumply crumplys. Good heavens, a never-ending cycle. But, but, when they come back, they always look brand spanking new. They are absolute wizards at giving me back good-looking clothes when I take in the uglies. They're great. Daryl's Cleaners, 1223 Albion Avenue in Burley with Kevin and Cindy. You stop in and see them today. Caller, I'll be there in a moment. Don't go away. SafeLink Internet also at 677-8000. That's the number to call. Sign up today for a one-year contract and receive free installation and $30 off your bill for the first three months of service. Hot dog! Well, you give them a call, 677-8000. We've been on their service for a long time. You should be too. SafeLink Internet, 677-8000. Good morning, caller. You're on the air.
Good morning, Zed. One quick question before I go out to vote. Do you think Cruz or Rubio could go toe-to-toe with somebody like Cruz?
I, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna probably act like I'm pushing and promoting the man, of which I may be, you never know, but I think absolutely when it comes to Cruz, not necessarily when it comes to Rubio.
Yep, that's all I wanted to know.
Well, you know, you asked that question, Tony asked that question, and I honestly believe this body language tells me a lot about how different people are. You can tell that Trump has a very pugnacious attitude and character by the way he stands at a podium with his hands resting on the podium, almost making fists, and that chin stuck out and that frown on his face. And then I look at the angelic little Christmas tree ornament face of Rubio, and I don't see that junkyard dog attitude. But when I look at Cruz, I see a man that is very self-assured in his ability to tell it like it is. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it certainly does, because I'm going out to vote, and I know who I'm gonna vote for, but I think the other two should drop out.
All right. Well, God bless you, Tony and Mary. Take care.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much. Calls are welcome, and it is primary day. I mean, Tony took the words right out of my mouth. It's primary day here. Go vote. Deanna and I are gonna go vote later on this afternoon. And I also wanna urge everybody in Cassia County, don't forget, it's the voting today for the Cassia County School Bond Election. So please, you've got a lot of things on your plate today. Don't ignore them. Take care of them, please. Thank you. Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. They open the doors at 7:30 in the morning, and they say, come on in, world! And they leave them open until 5 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. They've got all your heating and electrical needs, and the knowledge, and the people, and the skills, and please, don't worry about it. They can help you, they will help you, at Ramsey Heating and Electric, 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley, where they provide warm winters and cool summers. Yesterday was an interesting day for me, because I don't know what it was, but I was under a severe, "I'm hungry!" attack. I haven't been that hungry in a long time. Now, I've been on a self-enforced diet since last January, when I had some health problems. And I've lost, right at now, 31 pounds. And I'm proud of that. I mean, there were wranglers that had self-shrunk themselves in the closet that now are wearable. Hmm, funny how that works. And I was so hungry yesterday, and I do splurge on occasion. You can splurge on occasion and not tip over the apple cart. And when I splurge, I wanna go to Denny's Restaurant. Oh, do I ever have one of their delicious breakfasts! I love 'em! 611 Overland in Burley. And I'll tell you, whether it's breakfast, lunch, or dinner, or anytime, all the time, at America's Diner, the food is fantabulous. I've taken a lot of people with, Deanna and I, and they've said, wow, this is good eating! Well, it always is. Denny's Restaurant, 611 Overland in Burley. And don't forget Lunch Bunch next Thursday, St. Patrick's Day, and wear something green, okay? Denny's Restaurant, 611 Overland in Burley. It's your turn. Give me a call, 436-2244-1866-9274587. Last evening, there was a town hall gathering with Bingo Bernie and Hail Hillary. It was a liberal love fest. And you know, I sat there, and I listened to it on occasion. I couldn't stand or stomach to listen to the whole thing. Of course, I'm prejudiced in my thinking, because I can't stand either one of them. But Bernie, with all of his free-stuff attitude, the man is amazing to me. Bernie Sanders is absolutely amazing to me, that he has the millions that are advocates of what he stands for. And how he can get by with all of his free-stuff attitude and never really yet mention, or tell, or explain how much it's gonna make people suffer to pay for it! That was amazing to me last night. And then Hillary, Hail Hillary, with her raucous magpie voice, extolling the virtues of Obama and Obamacare. It got a little sickening last night. And then Bingo Bernie said, healthcare, and this is a question I wanna ask all of you folks out there this morning. Healthcare, Bernie said, is a right of all people. A right to have healthcare. A right to get the best of healthcare, equal to and the same as everyone else. How is it gonna be paid for? Who is going to pay for it? You are owner of a small business, and all of a sudden you get a huge bill, because you are gonna be paying for everybody else's healthcare, myself included. I'm gonna be paying for everyone else's healthcare. Is it really a right? Caller, good morning. You're on the air.
No.
Well, thank you, caller. Have a good day.
(laughing) I'll add a few words here.
Speak up a little bit and be a man of many words. Go ahead.
Well, it is, it's not a right. It's human compassion to help take care of other people, but it's not a right for someone to have something that other people work for and pay for.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, Doug, you sound like a man that understands the Constitution of the United States, and when I look at the first paragraph of our Constitution where it says, "All we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." Hmm, it didn't say anything about paying for Bernie's healthcare.
(laughing) No, I didn't hear it.
But you know, this is the liberal mantra that is being forced into the minds. And let me ask you this, if you agree with me or not. The millennials, the younger generation, absolutely, I mean, I am sick and tired and worried about the kids that they're interviewing on TV, the 30 and under crowd, they are absolutely dead-set certain that everything should be handed to them on a silver platter.
That's the result of a trophy for participation.
I agree. How are we gonna change this, Doug? This train's going down the tracks pretty fast.
It is. It really is. And none of the kids under 30 was, learned the lessons we did in school about communism and what communism did. They wanna, wanna see what socialism does. What is it, Venezuela? Are they, aren't they having a...
Oh, they have had more than their trials and tribulations.
Right. And they need to just look at that right there and say, okay, folks, this is what socialism's gonna bring.
Did you pay for your college, or did you go to college?
Uh, well, no, I did not go to college. I was one of those that went out, went to work. I went to school at Hard Knocks.
Now, that's, that's nothing to be feeling diminished about at all, because as you've heard me say on this radio program many times, I think that college and university attendance in an all situation is absolutely insane and ludicrous, because not all students are college education material. And there are many, many, many students that have their wants in life that include perhaps going onto the family farmer ranch, perhaps taking up the family business of welding and plumbing and everything. Very admirable positions, and quite frankly, plumbers make more money than politicians do.
Well, they make it a little more honest than plumbers.
Amen to that, baby. I'm telling you that. But you know, my point is that I paid for my college, and, and I'm not trying to make myself the holy I here, but I'll bet you, Doug, that if all the people that went to college or universities that are in the audience, they probably, I'd say 80% probably contributed or paid for their college education. Why is it now accepted that we, we, the taxpayers, have to pay for the millennials' education?
Because they're too damn lazy to work.
I agree.
Because they get the participation trophy, which means they're, hey, I participate, I'm entitled to recognition.
Yeah, well, Bernie and Hillary, they both went on this roll last night about, oh, we need qualified people to fill all these high positions, and we've got to have a better, easier way for them to go to college without being saddled with debt. Wait a minute! What makes their generation any better than me and you?
It doesn't. It doesn't. But they're talking, they're saying what they can say to get votes. And, and both sides are doing that. I'm not picking on just the Dems there, but if the folks, you know, don't like me picking on the Dems, that's fine. There's a, look at the choice they have. They have two.
Yeah.
One running from the FBI, and the other one never had a full-time job till he was 40.
(laughing) How true.
I'd say if I was a Dem too, this is all we got to put forward.
Well, I'm not trying to pick on the younger generation, because you've heard me many times say also, that I know a lot of great young kids that are really go-getters. They're up in the morning and saying, hello, world, here I come! They're goalsetters, and they're trying to make the best they can of all the talents God's blessed them with. But there's another side to that coin, too.
Exactly. And the ones that are go-getters, the ones that get up in the morning and have, you know, and, and do stuff, those are the ones that had parents which taught them responsibility, and that you're not gonna go anywhere unless you put out an effort.
I refer to those kids as a kind of a take-out-the-garbage-go-feed-the-cows type atmosphere, and they learned a work ethic, and they learned they had to do something for the reciprocity of living in the house as a family member and trying to learn about the goals and ideals of the talents that God gave them. That's a family, and that's a great situation. But then I hear these millennials get on TV, and they're asked questions like, well, who are you gonna vote for? Well, Bernie Sanders, 'cause he's gonna give me a free education.
(laughing) I know. Yeah, it's scary. I know when my son was growing up, I made a deal with him. I says, okay, I'll buy some calves. I'll buy the feed, and you feed 'em, morning and night, bottle-feed calves. I said, when we sell 'em, we'll split the money. Well, he conned his mother into feeding him most of the time, all the time.
Uh-oh.
And I asked her a few times, why isn't he up here doing it? Oh, he's got a headache, or he's studying for school. And she said, okay. Well, come time to sell the cows, I kept the money. And he said, where's my share? And I said, well, you didn't feed him.
Yeah.
I said, I should give half of it to your mother, 'cause she's the one that fed him, but if I give half to her, I know she's gonna give it to you, and you didn't earn it.
You know...
I was, he was mad at me for months after.
Yeah, but you know, you said that your boy said, oh, I can't do it, 'cause I had a headache. Let me tell you something. Growing up on the Wisconsin small farm that we had, if I wouldn't have done my chores, it wasn't my head that was gonna ache, I'll tell you that.
Exactly. That's the same thing here, my friend.
Okay, gotta run, buddy. Thanks.
Okay.
Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274587. No, it wasn't me having a headache. I'll guarantee you, there was another part of my anatomy that would've been sore if I hadn't have done my chores. I can just imagine coming home and, and my dad seeing that nothing had been done. Now, I usually, if I didn't have a sports activity to do, I'd get home from the sports activities probably about 5:30 or quarter to 6:00 after practices. And it was funny how those chores, they weren't done, and they were waiting for me. Hmm, I never figured that out. And then when it was in off-season for me, I'd usually get home on the bus at about maybe 20 minutes to 4:00. And whoa, betide me if I didn't get right outside, change my clothes, get right outside, and get those chores done. Dad usually got home at about quarter after 4:00. And he was the Sherlock Holmes with the pipe in his mouth, checking things out and making sure they were done. I didn't like to have him take that pipe out of his mouth. Hmm, enough said. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley. Hey, I'm gonna go back in there and start my exercise program again on that doggone hip of mine. They know all the exercises and the sports medicine, and they've got the hydrotherapy pool, yeah, only one of its kind in the area. Really a neat deal to help you get back to being you. Nick Greenwell and all of the physical therapists there, they know their business, and they can help you. Please, call 678-1191 for an appointment today. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation. Really, really great, folks. All right, give me a call, 436-2244-1866-9274587. Come on. Did you get the robocalls last night? I, I got seven of them last night. Now, my German temper after robocall number three was at an all-time high. On the thermometer of red in my temper, I pick up the phone, and they, there's a pause, and then all of a sudden, hello, this is Chris Christie. Hello, this is Governor Otter. Hello, this is Mitt Romney. Hello, this is Senator James Risch. And it kept going on and on and on, even until I went to bed last night. And I go to bed fairly early, because quarter to 4:00 in the morning comes relatively early. And I get to bed, and I turn off the light, and then all of a sudden, hello, this is... Ay yi 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 yi. Did you get those robocalls last night? Berry Equipment and Rental. Don't forget, they've got three locations serving you. Addison Avenue West in Twin Falls, South Lincoln and Jerome, and 159 West Highway 30 in Burley. And I wanna talk Coyote Tractors. They have got the great, great selection of Coyote Tractors at all three locations, 25 horsepower and up. And they've got a really, really great deal. I think it's still in effect. You should check it out today. Coyote 3510 with a loader, $19,450. What a great, great low price. Great warranty, super financing available at Berry Equipment and Rental. They've got all the equipment to get the job done right. Addison Avenue West, Twin Falls, South Lincoln and Jerome, and 159 West Highway 30 in Burley. Berry Equipment and Rental. Once again, a reminder, while I'm waiting for your calls, I had a call last night, and you know, I was half-foggy when I wrote this down, and I hope I got everything correct, is that the Cassia County Farm Bureau is gonna have their annual banquet tonight at the Burley and Best Western. And they had sent out all the invitations, I think like two, three weeks ago, and a lot of people are saying, didn't get 'em, don't know where they are. So they called me last night, and they asked me if those folks that want to attend tonight would please call the Farm Bureau Office and say you want tickets, and they'll put them on a will-call basis for you at the door, 678-0431. 678-0431. And Senator Kelly Anthon is gonna be speaking tonight at that Cassia County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet. There you go. And go vote today, too. Don't forget our friend, Dr. Christine Pickup, with, of course, Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. What'd he say, Martha? Well, I said, you'd better get in for a hearing screening if you're having trouble hearing. Hearing loss and dementia are linked together, and hearing loss is strongly associated with depression. Hearing loss could be associated with your medicines or your cardiovascular system. I'm telling you, there's all kinds of reasons why you should be concerned about hearing loss, and check it out. Call for a hearing screening at Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids at 312-0957. Caller today. All right, your turn to give me a call. And Deanna has something that's going off in the other room, a timer or something. Beep 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 beep. And I'd like to hear from you, so give us a jingle, 436-2244-1866-9274587. You know, now listen, I'm not making this stuff up. I saw this video. I wonder what gave police the idea to stop a woman back east last night for a possible driving-under-the-influence DUI? You don't suppose that maybe a clue was that as she was driving down the road, she had a 15-foot-tall tree that was stuck in her car's grill? You can't make this stuff up. The woman had a 15-foot tree stuck in the car's grill, and she's going down the road at about 45 miles an hour, and the cops pulled her over, and, yeah, buddy, she was drunk as a loon. (laughing) I'm not laughing at the drunken drive, it's a very serious offense. But don't you think for maybe a couple of seconds that the old gal could've thought, hmm, driving down the highway with a 15-foot-tall tree embedded into my grill may draw attention? It might make the police look at me? It might be very concerning that maybe I've had one too many? I'm sorry. I saw the video, and there's this tree, or this car going down the street with a big tree right in front, and standing up there just as tall as could be. Yes, she was arrested for a DUI. Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274587. You know, there are people in this world that you have to sit back and scratch your head, you gotta wonder how they get out of bed and get dressed in the morning. Doug's Alternator and Starter Repair. Well, imagine that. We just talked to him. At 635 21st Street, Al Fresco Road in Hayburn. Number to call, number to remember, 878-4991. Used to be called Ted's Diesel Electric Service. Well, old Doug bought it in '09, changed the name to Doug's Alternator and Starter Repair. Great service, just a different name. You give them a call today, 878-4991. Doug's Alternator and Starter Repair. Caller, good morning. You're on the air. Hello, caller. Come on.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I don't know if you've hit the, uh, yesterday, I had a call from an old friend from San Diego, my good friend Devinder Sikhan, who is from India originally. He's the same age as I am. And we talk politics, we talk religion, we talk everything. I mean, he's been a friend for, since the 70s and 80s, and he and his brother came from India when they were 19 and 21 years old, and they wanted to become Americans, and they went to school, they both graduated college, they have, and his brother became a professor at San Jose State, and this man was a very good businessman, Devinder is, and still is, in Southern California. Devinder is, and still is in Southern California. And I asked him a question yesterday, I says, Devinder, I says, it was my understanding that when you came to the United States, your visa ran out before you graduated from college or before you became, um, Americans. He says, yes, we had to leave the country, we had to go to, uh, Canada. And he says, it was a little over five years before we got to come back to the United States and finish school. But he said, we came here for that purpose. And he, he was so adamant about English being the only language. I mean, it is so interesting to talk to this man about, they came here for what America was and what it used to be. And I would just like to encourage everybody to get out and vote today because, um, we gotta protect that.
You know, I am so appreciative of your call this morning because, uh, I was talking to a dear friend the other day, as a matter of fact, about all the different languages in many, many areas like Chicago, LA, Boston, New York, Jacksonville, Florida, et cetera, where with the coming in of various people and demanding that they bring their culture and their language with them, I talked to one courthouse employee that said that, I think she said that they had pamphlets in a hundred and forty-eight different languages that you and I as taxpayers are paying for. This is ridiculous.
He says, it is ridiculous we should have one language. He says, this is America, this, we should be speaking English. And, I mean, the guy is, he's a tremendous individual and coming from India, he's of the Sikh religion and he's just a tremendous guy and it's a breath of fresh air to talk to people like that that love this country for what it was made for and that's why they came here in the first place.
Well, and the thing is, Jack, I so much appreciate your call this morning because I am sick and tired of being called a hate monger and a bigot because of my attitude. This is America. This is a land of opportunity. This is a melting pot. This is a place where people can go and with assimilation, they can fall into the auspices of what the red, white, and blue in our constitution offers them. I am not about to sit back and let all this cultural diversity come in and destroy what America stands for.
And another thing he said, when, when I got sick or had to go to the doctor, he says, I had to pay for it. He says, there is nothing wrong for taking care of yourself.
Amen.
Instead of having the government take care of it.
You know, I would appreciate, and I mean this, if you have a chance to talk to him again, to perhaps give him my number, I would love to see if I couldn't schedule, uh, him to come on my program and kind of be a real joy to listen to and hear what he has to say.
Well, I'll talk to him.
All right. God bless you for your call this morning. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. That's a dear friend right there. And what he says, you can tag to the bank because, uh, he's a very, very honest man. I appreciate that. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. I want to talk in a minute about something that I thought was very distasteful. And maybe I'm wrong, uh, but I thought it was extremely out of place and I'm going to tell you what it is in a minute in regards to Peyton Manning retirement speech yesterday. You'd be surprised, I think, the angle that we're going to go on here. Uh, don't forget that if you have pests, just add this nick or I'm thinking, huh, two-legged or four or many more. Anyway, uh, don't forget our friends at Certified Pest Control, Kevin and the whole crew at two one nine seven five seven six, and the web information at avoidbugs.com. I'll tell you what, I told you this story many times, they got rid of the voles and the mice on our place. And now it's timing critical for weed-free property. That's right, puncture vine, goat's heads, all the damage and the pain they can cause. Well, call Kevin. You bet. Treat your property to get rid of those noxious weeds. Call them at two one nine seven five seven six, two one nine seven five seven six. Certified Pest Control, absolutely the best. I watched yesterday as end of an era, the end of a career, the end of something really great. I thought that Peyton Manning got up and did an outstanding job of making sure in his retirement speech, and I don't care if it was the CEO from a big company or if it was a sports figure, that speech that he gave yesterday was one that could be admired and imitated and emulated by many. It was outstanding. And he got up and thanked everybody from the coaching staffs all the way down to the managerial positions. I mean, he absolutely thanked people for what he had become. But as you're aware, twenty years ago, twenty years ago, at the University of Texas, there have been some sleazy allegations, again, I use the word allegations, that Manning might have been involved in a sexual harassment of a female trainer at the University of Tennessee twenty years ago, when he was nineteen years of age. The writer for this story, Nancy Armour of USA Today, is a lady that I have never liked because of her take on various issues. Now, I will stand up and defend that she has every right to look at stories and, and write, uh, maybe on a negative side, her version of the story. And in this case, she wrote a very negative version. She basically has incriminated, and she basically has been the judge, jury, and executioner on a allegation. And she stated in her story yesterday with a huge headline, retiring Manning has chance to apologize. I take that as a great big negative against her and the USA Today because none of the allegations have been proven. None of the allegations have brought, been brought under the microscope to say, yes, he did this, or yes, so-and-so did that. But I'm also going to go back and I'm going to say this, and to all the girls out in the audience that are offended by this, your problem, not mine. Putting females into a male locker room, and I don't care if it's collegiate or I don't care if it's the NFL, is absolutely insane. Something at some juncture is going to happen. Something at some time is going to be said. Some action is going to be used or taken. And somebody is going to be offended and go, oh, my poor eyes or my ears, I can't, I can't understand why they did that to me. And lawsuits will prevail. This is, in my opinion, part of the problem in America today. We have lost the respect for our gender. We have lost the respect for if there's a football game and after the game is over and the athletes are in a celebratory mood or if they're in a down mood for losing, open the door and in comes all the reporters, many of which are women, in the locker room. And I've always found that offensive. And that goes right on down to the trainers and everything else within a male locker room. Why? Why are we trying to promote a unisex attitude in this country? And then when something happens, or allegedly something happens, woo, baby, there's a lot of trouble. Call me on that and give me your opinion, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. I want to thank Scott Gano of Landscaping and Sprinkler Service. You know, this guy and his staff, all of them, are just absolutely excellent. Now, I'm going to kind of give you a little real quick overview. I wanted a sprinkler system put in a couple of years ago, not only for the lawn, but also to go over to my arena to cut the dust down, cough, cough, hack, hack, the horses were coughing and everything. Did a marvelous job. They really know how to put in sprinkler systems. And then, of course, when it comes to trees, all your trees can be properly pruned, call them. They re, Scott, I had a long conversation with him one time, he really knows trees. Gano Landscaping and Sprinkler Service, three thirty-six South, four fifty West of Paul, number to call, four three one eight seven three three. Here now is Gina with the weather.
It's Tuesday, March eighth, and this is what our weather's going to look like for today. Partly cloudy skies, little bit on the breezy side, winds out of the southwest right around twelve miles an hour. Expect a high of fifty-one, tonight low of thirty-five. More clouds rolling into the valley in the overnight hours. That's going to leave us with cloudy skies for tomorrow, high of fifty-four with an overnight low of thirty-eight. And then warming up for Thursday and Friday, partly cloudy skies, slightly breezy highs are going to be in the mid-sixties. Yesterday, high was fifty-one, the overnight low was thirty. That's your weather for seven to rain.
Gina, thank you, great job. Brought to you this hour by Gano Landscaping and Sprinkler Service, three thirty-six South, four fifty West of Paul. Hello, Scott and crew, four three one eight seven three three. You know, let's also look at that story about Peyton Manning from another light, too. I mean, twenty years ago, twenty years ago, when he's a student at the University of Tennessee, um, look at your mirror today, look at yourself in that mirror and give an honest appraisal of maybe some of the things that you had done twenty years ago. And I'll include myself in that. We all have maybe a few or more than a few skeletons hanging in our closet of twenty or more years ago. And for this writer, this, I detest this woman, Nancy Armour, to make an allegation grow and grow and grow and say that during his speech yesterday of retirement, he should have used it as an apology, I find that repulsive. Now, on the other hand, if these allegations are pursued and we find out that they were true, yep, then I think it's time for Peyton Manning or anyone, step up to the podium, be a man and say, I did this, I'm sorry for that, it happened when I was in my junior year of attending college or the University of Tennessee and I'm sincerely sorry for it. But twenty years ago, all of us probably have something that we'd rather not remember. Give me a call, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. I'd like to hear what you have to say this morning, so please, come on, dial the number, it's real easy, give me a jingle. Um, I, I tell you, this is insane what's going on in this country. The State Department, listen to this, folksies. Well, I'll have you listen to this, folksies, in just a minute. Good morning, caller, you're on the air, go ahead.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
I want you to know that there is a free lunch yet. I've heard it said there wasn't. But anybody that's sixty to a hundred years old, come to the Burley Senior Center tomorrow, I'm buying lunch for them if they've never been there before.
Well, now, that is very nice. Now, I got to ask you, sir, are you going to have your own ID checked? Are you over sixty?
I don't know, but I'm going to check on it tomorrow.
Okay. Joe, that's an awful nice thing. Are you serious? Anybody that wants a free lunch that's over sixty and up to a hundred, you're going to buy them lunch, right?
That's right. Now, we're going to have turkey and dressing, mashed potatoes and gravy, green beans, cranberry sauce, and some yummy dessert. And of course, we'll have a roll and glass of milk.
And that's all at the Golden Heritage Senior Center?
That's right, that's tomorrow. Be there about a quarter to twelve.
I'll tell you what, if you see the man walking in with the money bulging out of his pockets, it's you to buy lunch.
I don't know about those closing pockets. Anyway, I appreciate you, sir.
God bless you, Joe, it's good to hear from you and I appreciate you. Thank you so much for your act of kindness. That's very nice. Thank you.
Have a good day.
God bless you. Isn't that nice? Isn't that nice? I have more respect for that man, great real estate man, Joe Taylor. And you just heard what he offered tomorrow. I think that's very, very nice. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Did you hear what the state, this is how insane political correctness is getting in this country. This is absolutely nuts. Our State Department has issued a warning to their employees that microaggressions may count as harassment. Now, you're probably sitting there going, what, 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 what? Microaggressions may count as harassment. Following the example set by elite liberal universities, the United States State Department has begun cracking down on what they call microaggressions in the workplace. And microaggressions can be deter, can be determined as this. They may be detrimental to employee morale and engagement. Left unaddressed, microaggressions can over time lead to workplace conflict and eventually affect operations. Now, here's what it is. Microaggressions, which are defined as everyday verbal, nonverbal, and environmental slights, snubs, or insults, whether intentional or unintentional, which communicate hostility, derogatory or negative messages to target persons. In other words, if you say Merry Christmas to someone that might not like that, that's a microaggression. If you say to an Asian person, whereabouts are you from? That is a microaggression. If you say something insensitive like Americans, uh, and you use the terminology to encompass everybody, well, not all the people might be Americans, that is a microaggression. And if you say that America is the land of opportunity, oh, oh, you're putting America better than other countries and that's called a microaggression. And you might be hauled into the boss's office and, woo, that could be harassment. You think I'm making this up? It's an edict that came out this morning from our State Department, warning employees about what they can say and they better not say. This is nuts. On this program, for as long as we're on the air, you can count on nine thousand three hundred and seventy-three microaggressions every day. And I'm proud of it. Don't forget, your Magic Valley Less Swamp Tire Centers, all seven locations. Oh, do they do a job for you. They've got all your tires. They've got a brand new road control passenger car tire, specially designed grooves and a new three D side ping that reduces hydroplaning in wet conditions and reduced weight improves rolling resistance for better fuel efficiency and a quiet ride, too. Check out that tire for your car. Check out all the tires for your car. Check out all the fancy custom wheels. Oh, I saw a set of wheels over there the other day. Oh, baby, what I'd like to have on my pickup. Check out the best in brake service, mm-hmm, and front end alignment, shocks and struts, and the best in batteries. Oh, yeah. All of this and more with all seven locations. Lane and Rupert, Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin, Mike and Buell, Mike and Jerome, The Twist Family and Paul, John on Polina in Twin Falls, and Randy on Overland in Burley, the best, your Magic Valley Less Swamp Tire Centers. Okay, what do we got coming up for the rest of the day here? Uh, go vote, go vote, Cassia County School Bond election along with the primaries today, don't forget that. Uh, nine oh six, right after the news, Frosty Woolridge. And then at nine thirty, one of my very favorite people coming on the air, Marita Noon, and talking about the energy programs and policies of the Democrats and versus the Republicans, very distinct differences. And then at ten oh six, Dr. History will be here and then Dr. John Zemirik. I invited- Zamiric. I invited him back this morning to talk about the Trump phenomena and what's happening with Trump and why he's so popular, even though he's offended a lot of people. We're gonna cover all that this morning. But I urge you now to sit still, listen to the CBS News, and then we will be coming back here in about six minutes. Old Wheels over at the main studio is gonna play us a little tune. We'll be right back. Thanks, everybody. Oh, my, here we go. Hour number two on a Tuesday, March the 8th. Good morning. Don't forget to go vote today. Cassia Bond election is today along with the primaries. I'm Zeb Bell, Zeb at the Ranch with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Less Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you. And of course, some of our great advertisers, including Western Waste Services.
From the canyons of the Snake River and all across Southern Idaho, we're always at your disposal. Western Waste Services, we care about our community, our resources, and our freedom. Western Waste Services is leading ahead. Always at your disposal.
Western Waste Services, always at your disposal. Call 734-6969. You know what? If you're cleaning out your house, I mean, you're gonna have a cleaning party. Or your business, or you need a dumpster at your construction site, they've got all the residential and commercial dumpsters. I could use about 30 of them here to clean out this office. Well, by golly, if you need one for a day, a week, or a month, you choose, just give them a call at Western Waste Services, always at your disposal. Call them today. Locally owned and operated, 734-6969. Really good folks. You know, when I say good folks, it usually encompasses all of my advertisers and sponsors on this program, especially including our dear friend Joel Heward, manager of Hanson Mortuary at 710 Sixth Street in Rupert. Yes, his family, yes, his staff, and himself, always serving you, flexible hours to be around where you need them in a time of need. You know, when there's the passing of a loved one, you just, it's an absolutely, like I said, tumultuous time, and you want answers. You want direction, and they can help, always with the highest ethical standards with unquestioned integrity. Please give them a call today. Hanson Mortuary at 710 Sixth Street in Rupert, and the number to call, 436-5636. I look forward to Tuesdays 'cause, man, do we get an enlightening conversation with a very, very dear friend of mine, both on the radio and off the radio. Good morning, Frosty Woolridge in Golden, Colorado. How are you?
Good morning, Zeb. A pleasure to be with you. I always look forward to Tuesdays. I hope that everyone got a chance to see Peyton Manning's farewell speech to the NFL last night. It was a class act from A to Z. His emotions showed, his, his care and concern and appreciation for all the coaches that touched his lives, every teammate. He complimented the rest of the NFL and all of us fans who have watched him over the last 18 years. And it's quite an era. He ends with two Super Bowls, having gone to four Super Bowls. He has the most passes of all time. In the end, I just like it that he was such and is a class act, and I hope he remains in the NFL to possibly be a coach and lead another team to the Super Bowl, to complete that particular legacy. But it really was neat yesterday to see Peyton Manning give his farewell speech.
You know, I agree with you, and it's funny that you should bring that up as the first topic of information, because I was talking about this last hour. One of the things that really bothered me about yesterday was an article that was in USA Today, written by a woman that I cannot like, I cannot stand. Her name is Nancy Armour. And she used the, the footstool, if you will, of her article to really denounce and put Peyton Manning in a negative position when she had the headline, "Retiring Manning Has A Chance To Apologize." And all of this based on allegations of what might or might not have happened when he was a junior at the University of Tennessee. I found that headline and the diminishment of what Peyton Manning had done and said in his retirement speech, I thought it was absolutely uncalled for.
Well, it was uncalled for, but there are, there are always individuals who want to get a piece of, of, of a public figure. Cut them down, degrade them, certainly to demote them to their own level. And when you look at his sterling career, he did in, in just a few words passing, said, "I'm not going to give credence to that allegation." The same thing with the Al Jazeera, you know, deal with some character who made some unbelievable charges against him. The fact of the matter is, he's a man of quality. He's a man of, of intelligence, and he's a man that has shown himself to be a good human being. And it is a sad thing, but in the end, such my, not even, just such allegations are just from people that are trying to grab their 15 seconds of fame. They don't earn it. They, they don't, they don't have any right to it, and all they're doing is creating their own negative world and trying to wallow in it. And I, you know, in the end, they just get flicked off like water off a duck's back.
You know, Frosty, I might lead you into a story here that you didn't think that maybe we'd talk about this morning, but I think it has to be talked about. And I really value your opinion. I have said many, many times on this program, and I'm not gonna back up for anybody, I'm gonna say it the way I feel it, that our country, on a moral basis, is going in the gutter. And to talk a little bit more about that, yesterday, on my Alliance Defending Freedom segment with the attorneys, talking about how various school systems in South Dakota and other school systems are being coerced by the lesbian, gay, and transgenders to have an open bathroom philosophy and an open locker room philosophy, that without having any proof of gender or a state ID card or whatever, people that think they're a woman, or women that think they're a man, they can go use whatever facility they want. And just this morning, New York City Mayor Bill de Blasio signed an executive order saying that the use of public bathrooms based on a person's self-determined gender identity will now become law, and you can use anything you want. I think this is a risk to our humanity and a risk to our morality. What are your thoughts?
Well, I certainly agree with you on, on all those aspects. That we, as a civilization, certainly as a culture, have gone through all sorts of trauma over the years. I mean, women's rights have become the greatest right on the face of the planet, starting with Susan B. Anthony. Women in America have, you know, Margaret Mead, Jane Goodall. You look at all of the incredible athletic women of all races and ethnic groups that have been able to express themselves here under the U.S. Constitution. One of the things that's so amazing to me, and I appreciate, and I have a copy of the Constitution right here in my office, is that this extraordinary document allows personal freedom, personal freedom of expression, and all of the, the advantages of, of being a free person in a free society. And then you see what's happening to our culture. You, you see what's happening to the mixing and matching and, and unmixing of all of these different individuals, even they, whether it's a transgender or a, or a gay, whatever, they have extraordinary rights here, and they have extraordinary opportunities. And, and I celebrate that. I celebrate those opportunities and those rights and those abilities to function in a free society and not somewhere in the closet or otherwise. At the same time, we're, we're being forced into situations that are truly dangerous. When you, you have a DNA of a man who is posing as a woman, being able to go into a woman's bathroom, there is something categorically incorrect, or wrong, or immoral, or certainly unethical about that. I hope at some point, and vice versa, a, a woman, whether you have a Bruce Jenner who turns into a woman, or you have a, a woman who wants to be a man, I would hope that as, as the codes go in the future, the building codes, you're gonna have to have a male and a female bathroom, or you can have that male-female bathroom with a door lock so that you, you have the privacy of your, your individuality. And the same thing in the locker rooms of schools. You're, you're gonna have to have that kind of a demarcation, because everybody has a right to have their own privacy. And, and even though it seems very confusing to me, in the future, we're going to have to deal with it because of that Constitution allows these personal freedoms and rights. At the same time, we're gonna have to deal with it with some kind of privacy and personal determination and personal safety. That's what I'm coming up with right now, Zeb.
Well, I'll just tell you this, and we've been friends for a long time. And, and I don't, I don't back up for anyone on any issue, friend or foe. And I've said this on my radio program, and I'm gonna stand behind this statement as a Christian and as a believer. God does not make mistakes.
Well, there's no question that God is, is, well, you know, I pray every day. I go to church every Sunday. And I'm appreciative of all of these blessings that, that you and I, and all of us enjoy. And I have to admit, in these times of confusion, and there is tremendous confusion across our country, you know, and most of that confusion has come on the heels of literally taking away our culture with this multiculturalism, taking away our, our rights when it comes to diversity, taking away our ethos as a civilization by impacting us and injecting with, with all these other ethos and all these other religions and all that goes with it. There's a lot of confused people out there. I, I am so thankful that I am not a confused person. I'm a pretty steady as a rock, even as a keel type of person, and I'm thankful for that. And in the end, I hope all those individuals who are confused about their sexuality, or they're confused about their, whatever they're confused about, I hope they come to terms with it, and I hope that, that they're allowed to or move towards some kind of balance.
Yeah, but you know what? I'm gonna interrupt you right there.
By consternation, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy journey.
I think that this country has become way too lenient, way too liberal. I absolutely think that we need more rigid construction against and all for many things. This multiculturalism, as you mentioned a moment ago, we are not a melting pot anymore. We are an accepting nation to break apart our beliefs, our language, our, our cultures on the wane, because everybody's coming in and bringing what they want here to America. It's no longer America the melting pot, and that's where I really get upset.
Well, and you should. You know, we're being displaced as a civilization. I mean, we're being displaced. I mean, that, that's a fact. There's, there's no way to, to understand that. Our ethos is being changed. Our whole essence as a, as a people is being, being changed. I really, I, I really fear for the loss of, of the ethos of America and what it means for all of us, because in reality, when you lose the basic concepts of your culture, and you get displaced by, by millions, and, and again, I, I've said this before, and I can't say it enough, we're about to absorb 100 million third-world immigrants within the next 30 years if we don't stop mass immigration. And it is not gonna be good for anybody.
That's right.
That it's going to have cultural conflict, it's gonna have religious conflict. We essentially will turn into another Pakistan.
That's right.
We'll turn into another Paris, France.
That's right.
We'll turn into another Stockholm, Sweden, Melmo, Sweden, Bergen, Norway. We'll turn into another London, England, and, and be an extraordinarily separated society. And that's where we're headed. That's why, again, I've called for a complete shutdown on all immigration into this country. Otherwise, our kids are gonna be left with one hell of a mess.
I agree. I, I gotta check. I think we have a caller waiting on the line with a question. Caller, if you're still there, quickly, go ahead, please. I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
Yes, good morning. There's two, two things that are happening in the state legislature. And of course, the news media just, there's a bill to prevent Idaho law from being, interpreting Sharia law, or prevent Sharia law from being the legal law in, in Idaho. And that bill, of course, has been ridiculed tremendously by the press, but it's, you know, the safeguards that we need. So we need to be contacting our legislators on that. And yesterday, the State Affairs Committee talked about the Constitution. They just threw it in the trashcan because they voted five to three, the State Affairs Committee, to have a Constitutional Convention. And it'll go out to the full Senate. So get hold of your representatives and senators, folks, because it's gonna be a full vote, and they only need seven more states, and they will automatically have a Constitutional Convention, which will be an open convention, and it will throw the Constitution we have now in the, in the gutter.
All right.
I'd like Frosty to comment on this, on that.
You know, Frosty, first and foremost, let's talk, thank you, caller, let's talk a little bit about this Sharia law. You know, there are some very naive people, this is my opinion, you can disagree if you like, but there are some very naive people that are involved in government, whether it's on a local, state, or national level, that don't realize the problem that is growing like a cancer all across the United States, be it Michigan, your old home state, or whether it's Florida, New York, wherever it might be. Because there are many coming over from Muslim countries that want, want the implementation of Sharia law to dictate and legislate to them, and it's a growing concern. Is it not? Do you agree with me or not?
Oh, it's totally happening across the country. There's de facto Sharia law right now going on in Detroit, Michigan, de facto Sharia law going on in New York, the same with Minneapolis, Minnesota, places like Fremont, California, where all Muslims are now becoming the dominant figures. It's happening in Philadelphia. We don't, the American people don't have a clue that what's coming at us. And Sharia law counters everything about freedom. It counters everything about women's rights. It counters everything about the Constitution. And, and so the only way that we can protect ourselves is that we jump out in front of this thing and, and absolutely make Sharia law completely impossible to be implemented in this country. But again, we're still gonna have a tremendous battle as, as Muslims grow from their current, the, the figures are somewhere between five and seven million. Well, when they get around 10 million, and then they get into 15 million, Muslims are gonna be absolutely taking a complete caliphate and turning their caliphates here in America into Sharia law. They will completely neutralize all constitutional law, and it will be de facto Sharia law. And that will, of course, create more and more separation of our country. And what the caller just said, as far as conventions, at some point, states are not gonna sit back and watch this whole thing happen. They're gonna call, they're gonna create a, you know, I, I think it's Constitutional Convention of States. I don't know the exact term for it. But states, at some point, may say, "Enough of this." And I think even possibly Idaho or Montana, Montana may say, "We're, we're tired of this, and we're going to change course." And that's why I see, you know, years ago, it was called Civil War II, The Coming Breakup of America by Thomas Chittam. I actually interviewed that man, and he, he, he said, "We are in the throes of separating our country and our Constitution and our way of life because of mass immigration." He says it's inevitable. Well, if we keep adding this, one next 100 million people, there's no question, it's inevitable. We're gonna start cracking up on the rocks.
I agree. We've got another caller with a quick question. I've only got four minutes left. Good morning, caller. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I was doing some checking history, and in the 60s and 70s, if I'm not mistaken, Frosty, we allowed 250,000 a year immigrants who actually assimilated into our country. And now, because of Congress, probably the Democrats who wanted to, you know, have votes, they have changed that, and it's literally destroying our country. And if you look at Europe, and, and you, the cover-up of the European media of what is really happening and how destabilized Western Europe is, they were on the border of Macedonia, and the, the Muslims, and they were raising, they're raising hell over there. And then nobody's telling us about it. Now, don't hang up.
Go ahead, Frost.
He's, he's exactly correct. He's exactly correct. Of course, I have a brother in Europe, I have friends in Germany. In fact, two of my friends, Reinhold and Monica Sindler, just came through here to visit, and they said, "There is no opinion allowed in Germany. There's no opinion whatsoever. The press is shut down." And if you look at the liberal press here in the United States, whether it's the New York Times, or whether it's the Minneapolis Tribune, right here in Denver, they absolutely suppress any knowledge or any reporting of what's actually going on. And in fact, all these different newspapers are supporting Islam. I mean, over in... They are actually castigating all of the American citizens there in Minneapolis, Minnesota. In fact, the governor said, "If you don't like Islam, you can move out of state." I mean, that's what's going on. Our own media are supporting the radicals and all of Islam to literally displace we, the American citizens who built our society. And that's exactly what's happening over in Europe. But again, it's a smoldering, simmering cauldron over in Europe right now. That's the reality, and it's gonna explode this summer. As I sit here right now, in March of 2016, I predict and I know what's gonna happen. And I mean, there's gonna be horrific riots going on, there's gonna be a whole lot of bloodshed, you know, Europeans against Muslims. Well, the same thing's gonna happen here in the United States. That is exactly what's gonna happen to our country, because it's now already happening in Europe.
You know, I gotta run, but I wanted to also inject, if you got my latest blog, The Cowpies and Coffee Cups, I forgot to tell you in a phone call that you are to bring the potato chips to that party.
Yeah, they better be organic.
Anyhow, God bless you, man. Thanks for being on the program again this morning. Frosty Woolridge, Golden, Colorado. Take care of yourself. Either that, or you can bring the plywood for the Pin the Tail on You-Know-Whom. We'll talk to you later.
I'll do that, thank you, Zed.
Thanks, Frosty. Later, bye-bye. Oh, my latest blog. What it was, and you can go to Cowpies and Coffee Cups, is that I had a dream about creating a goodbye Barak party, and I'll let you read the blog. Anyway, calls are welcome, 436-224-41869274587. Don't forget, Let's Ride. Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24, between Rupert and the World. Ah, yeah, I took my four-wheelers over there the other day and have them serviced. And get ready for the spring and the summer. I urge you to do the same with your ATVs, dirt bikes, boats, et cetera. And don't wait, don't wait till the last minute, you get a phone call and your friends say, "Let's go ride in the ATVs," and you say, "I can't, 'cause I haven't had them serviced yet." Get them all done now. Call Let's Ride at 436-4771. Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24, between Rupert and the World, where the fun is sold. You know, also, if you're over in that neck of the woods, or that part of the desert, be sure and call for an appointment to have your insurance coverage checked. Ah-ha! Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert. Number to call, 436-4424. Life insurance, health insurance, retirement planning, you know, you gotta plan ahead for that retirement. Don't do like I did, please, don't do like I did. I didn't do anything. And employee benefits, they've got it all. All you have to do is just make an appointment with the people that are really accessible and devoted to serving you and others. Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert. By the way, once again, vote day, vote day for the primary, and also vote for the Cache County School Bond Election today and tonight. Don't forget the Cache County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet at the Best Western Burley Inn at 6:00 PM. They had some problems with the invitations that were sent out, I didn't get one, and they wanna remind everybody, call the Farm Bureau office for your tickets on a will-call basis at 678-0431. It is tonight, and our dear friend Senator Kelly Anthon will be the guest speaker, so that is tonight. By the by, also, wanna remind you about Red's Trading Post. Oh, man, they've been in the Old Town Twin Falls location since way back, way back, 1936. They know guns, they've got all the guns, they've got all the different models, they've got all the ammo, they've got all the accessories, they've got all the knives, they've got all the sights and the optics, and they've got all the holsters. They've got it all, right there at Red's Trading Post, 203 Fifth Avenue South in Twin Falls. Ryan and the rest of his crew, very, very knowledgeable people. Like I said, in historic Old Town Twin Falls since 1936, Red's Trading Post. There is a lady that I absolutely have the utmost of respect for, and she is the author of the book, which I have right here on my desk, and I refer to many times during the course of the week when it comes to energy. Energy Freedom, written by Marita Noon. Good morning, New Mexico, how are you today? Is she there? Wheels, do you have her on the air and ready to go?
She is on the phone.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Marita, how are you?
I'm great, it's a treat to talk to you, Zed. Thanks for the opportunity.
Well, it's my pleasure, and I really commend you that you've really kinda devoted your life to giving all of us information about energy that we otherwise might not hear about. How did you get started doing this, anyway? I've never asked you that question.
Well, it's not really a pretty story, in all honesty. I've been doing this work now almost 10 years. I started my first, put my toe in the water in August 10 years ago, 2006, and I became the Executive Director of the Citizens Alliance for Responsible Energy in January of 2007. So I've been doing this now for about 10 years, and I come from a background as a full-time Christian motivational speaker. I've written 19 books in that genre, Christian, personal growth, nonfiction, primarily on personality types, communication skills, and relationships. And in doing that work, I traveled around the country at the peak of the organization, the company that I headed up. We had 12 seminars around the country each year, one a month, in some part of the country, where we trained men and women to be speakers and writers. And so I was traveling all over the country, and this is the not pretty part. In December of 2005, literally a few days before Christmas, my now ex-husband gave me an ultimatum, and he told me that I needed to decide if I was going to have a business or a marriage. And the traveling that I did and had done for our entire married life of 29 years wasn't working for him. And because, A, I loved my husband, B, I was a Christian but believed in marriage, and C, I wrote books on relationships, I kinda had no choice but to walk away from the only thing that I had ever known and try something totally different. And my best friend at the time, her husband had the job that I now have, and he hated this job. And so when I needed to change my life, I knew her husband was always trying to find someone to replace himself. He'd run ads in the paper, that was back when you did it that way. And I went to her and said, "Do you think I could do this tear thing?" And she said, "Oh, you could do it in your sleep," she said, "but it's really boring." And that's how I got into this.
Wow. You know, I'm very proud to be a Christian, and I'm glad to talk to you as a Christian, because I always have believed in my life that when one door closes, another one opens, thanks to our beliefs.
I agree.
You know, you...
I would agree.
Your insight into the energy problem in this country, and I wanna get back into this right now, I have said on my program many, many, many times, uncountable times, that I believe this election is going to be an election that is going to really separate the good, the bad, the evil, and what is necessary for the good of this country. I look at the ideologies of Bernie Sanders and Hillary Clinton, and I see nothing but more taxes, I see nothing but more cutbacks, I see nothing but more enslavement and control of the people. And I look over on the Republican side, and quite frankly, it's a potpourri of personalities right now as to who is gonna better run this country. So I'm gonna let you take it from there, because you had an excellent article called, "Both Parties Are Fractured, But on Energy, Each Is Unified." Explain that, please.
Yeah, you know, it couldn't be more different, the two sides. I mean, it really lays out, when you look at the energy policies of the six candidates that are, you know, competing for the office of the president at the moment, the contrast could not be more different between the Republicans and the Democrats. And I set out to write this column, I've been planning to write this column for months, because as I do interviews like this one with you, many of the times I've been asked, you know, "Well, what do you think of candidates' energy policies?" And other than the piece I wrote a few weeks back at the time of the Iowa caucuses about Ted Cruz kinda standing up to the ethanol lobby and Donald Trump pandering to the ethanol lobby, I haven't paid much attention to it, because frankly, there were too many candidates. And so I would tell talk show hosts when they'd ask me about this, I'd say, "Well, you know, once the field narrows down a little bit, I will write a piece on the candidates' energy policies." So I was planning, following Super Tuesday, which is after which Ben Carson dropped out, I figured, well, whoever's still standing after Super Tuesday, I will do an energy analysis of these candidates. And so I planned to do, you know, a couple paragraphs on Donald Trump, a couple paragraphs on Ted Cruz, a couple paragraphs on Marco Rubio and on John Kasich. However, when I got into actually doing the research, they are all so similar on their energy policies, but yet so totally different from Bernie Sanders and Hillary Clinton, who are also very similar, that, you know, the piece that you mentioned was born. And the reality is, is that whoever is the next president is going to greatly, well, totally determine how America produces, uses, and distributes energy. And, you know, this is a vital issue, and no one really is talking about it at all. I mean, Bernie Sanders, in his victory speech in New Hampshire, went on about how important climate change is and why we need to be getting away from fossil fuels. But other than that, it's, the energy policy is virtually nonexistent in the discussion of this election cycle.
Well, one simple sentence, one simple sentence in your piece that you had written sets the tone for what people need to know when they go to the polls. And I'm gonna read it, and then I want you to discuss it. Overall, the Democrats' approach can be summed up as anti-conventional fuels, resulting in higher costs for consumers. That's it for me. I do not, at my age, need to spend more of my hard-earned money that I've put away from my retirement, that I've put away from my wife and myself and our enjoyment. I don't need to have some politician tell me that I've got now the opportunity to regress and go live in a cave and burn buffalo dung. And that's basically what the Democrats are telling me.
Yes, and the important thing is, it's not just that they're pro-renewable, which is accurate, they are pro-renewable, but they are actually anti-fossil fuel, anti-coal, anti-oil, anti-natural gas. And so they really are anti-conventional fuels. They both want to curb or cut fossil fuel use. They don't wanna just expand renewable, but they are intentionally wanting to restrict. And Hillary Clinton at the CNN debate, or they asked her at the CNN debate if she supports hydraulic fracturing, and she went on about this whole, she kinda did a little dance around it, and said that, "Well, you know, I would have a lot of restrictions on it." And then she listed some of the restrictions, and she said, "So basically, when I'm done, there would be no hydraulic fracturing." And then Bernie Sanders came in, and he said, "I can be more so, I can state it more simply. Yes, I am against hydraulic fracturing." So, and you have to realize that 96% of the wells drilled in the United States today, well, maybe not today, 'cause fewer are being drilled, but you know what I mean, I'm speaking in the bigger picture.
Right.
96% of the wells drilled in this country, that these wells that are responsible for America's new era of energy abundance have been drilled using hydraulic fracturing.
That's right.
If you come out against hydraulic fracturing, you are against American oil and natural gas production.
Marita, I think that we have, I don't know if they're still there or not, but I had word that we have a caller on the line. Caller, are you still there? Quickly, go ahead if you're there. Are they still there?
They're... They hung up.
All right, thank you. Marita, there has to be some Democrat...
Let me interrupt you for just a second, if I may. I should've said this, you said my sentence out of my column that is the overall of the Democrats. At the end, after I give the analysis of the Republicans, I say, and I just feel like we need to wrap up this segment, this part with this, "Overall, the Republican views can be summed up as embracing the positive potential of America's energy abundance resulting in lower costs."
Yeah, I was gonna end the segment with that, as a matter of fact.
I'm sorry.
And I wanted you to make a comparison at this juncture, between now talking about the left side of the aisle, the Democrats, and what we're hearing with the, "Everybody gets a free trip through life with bingo Bernie and hail Hillary." What about the Republican side? Please, now, there's four guys left in the race, there only should be two, but talk about the differences, if there are any, between Kasich, Rubio, Cruz, and Trump.
Well, there are limited differences. The major one is with Kasich, because Trump, Cruz, and Marco Rubio, and let me back up for a moment. You have to discuss climate change.
Right.
Because the Democrats believe that climate change is a crisis caused by human beings burning fossil fuels. And from that base, their energy policy is built. And the energy policy in this country for the past decade has been based on that premise. Now, we've had numerous disproven predictions, or failed predictions, that have come out of the global warming alarmist camp, or the warmist profiteer camp. And there's, you can just search "failed global warming predictions," and you'll come up with many, many lists of these failed predictions. But, and, you know, we've had the warming hiatus and so forth. So when you look at that, the Democrats' foundation is global warming as a man-made crisis caused by human beings burning fossil fuels. The Republicans, on the other hand, Donald Trump has called it a hoax.
Yep.
Ted Cruz has called it a pseudo-scientific theory.
Yep.
And Marco Rubio has said, "The climate's always changing, that's not the fundamental question." The fundamental question is whether man-made activity is what's contributing most to it. And then he adds, "And I do not believe the laws that they propose we pass will do anything about it except destroy our economy." So three of them are all pretty much on the same page. Donald Trump, of course, has a bit more hyperbole in his comments, and Cruz and Rubio are kind of in the middle. And then Kasich, he acknowledges that his views cut against the grain in the Republican Party, in that he does believe climate change is a problem, but he believes that there are technological solutions that can be adapted. He's more, Kasich is more in favor of renewable energy and renewable energy subsidies than the other three.
Right.
And so that's where the big difference in the Republicans are, is that they all, all four supported the Keystone Pipeline, all four are critical of the EPA's aggressive regulations, and all four want to spur economic growth in America by increasing energy production and reducing our reliance on foreign sources.
Absolutely. Now, we do have another caller. Caller, quickly, I'm almost out of time. Keep your questions short, please, go ahead.
Yes, speaking of renewable, green energy and climate change, and how effective it is, or ineffective, right now in America, there's 15,000 to 20,000... it is, or ineffective, right now in America, there's 15,000 to 20,000 abandoned wind turbines, the ones we see around here, all across America, that have, they've never paid for themselves, somebody that built them, cost us taxpayers, and these things are now, the folks, 15,000 to 20,000 of them, all hanging up.
Marita, respond to that, please.
Yeah, he's accurate. The problem is, is that once the tax credits that pay for the wind turbines, that make them feasible, once the tax credits expire, there's not, they're not possible, they can't make the money. I did a story a few years ago, on a particular project, a small community wind farm project, I believe in Minnesota, and they've gone bankrupt, and leaving the landholders, the people who are expecting to get payments for these turbines being on their farm, leaving them high and dry.
You know, I want to say this, Marita, and I want you to respond to my comment on this. I have said for a long, long time on this program, that I only get quality people that really know what's going on, on my show. Whether it's professors at various universities, men and women of science, all across the United States, and for that matter, even out of the United States. And I can honestly say that of all the people I've invited on this program, most of the general feeling was that it's pretty self-flattering for man to think that they can change the climate. And one person said it best that I had on my show a long time ago, he said, "God's got his hand on the thermostat, not mankind." How would you respond to what I just said?
Well, I would agree 100%, in fact, I wrote a column, and I encourage your listeners who share our faith, to look this column up, and I don't remember the exact title of it, I wrote it maybe in December, and it's about the green groups infiltrating the Christian church. And they're trying to, because the Christians in general are rejecting this whole message, because we do believe that God created the earth for mankind, and not the other way around. And I often ask, you know, "Why do you think God put coal under the earth? Why do you think he put oil and gas instead of just dirt? God could have just put dirt there." But I believe that he knew that for such a time as this, we were going to need that resource.
Absolutely. Looking ahead now to the, this is another Super Tuesday, if you will, there's quite a few delegate votes available. Honestly, who in your opinion, do you think is going to emerge as maybe a contender against Donald Trump, or maybe a leader against Donald Trump, and their thoughts to the American public regarding energy? Really, who shows the best program to the American public?
Well, you know, I personally, I'm okay with Trump. I'm not a Trump supporter, but I'm okay with Trump, and I think his energy policies will be good. I like Kasich, but really, any one of them, when you look at energy, I probably like Cruz a little better than Rubio, I probably like Rubio the least.
And let me just ask you this quick question to wrap things up. The Democrats, the liberal attitude, they have the millennials and our college students, they have the younger generation. Last night at that town hall meeting, it was very apparent that they think, they being the younger millennials, that Bernie and Hillary can walk on water. They weren't told that they really know where the rocks are. I am really shocked as to the gullibility of the younger generation. Would you quickly respond to that?
Yeah, it's funny, in fact, I'm going to comment in responding to that real quickly. I just got a message on Facebook from a teacher, who teaches an energy program in, outside of Bakersfield, California. It's a high school program that are prepping these students to go into the energy industry. And he just sent me this message on Facebook, he says, "New one for you. I'm at an educational conference that a few renewable energy academics are at. Got into an argument when I said, 'If not for subsidies, these sources can't compete.' They then proceeded to tell me that oil was subsidized. Tried to argue that we are the most heavily regulated industry, and they dismissed me as being big oils." He says, "Unbelievable that folks like this don't know the facts, and are teaching kids." And I think that's your answer right there.
I agree.
That's why these millennials, young millennials, don't know any better, because that's not what they're being taught.
Amen. I wished I had more time, and I always look forward to having you back on the program. Lovely lady, author, and just absolutely knows more about energy than most any others, and that's Marita Noon, from New Mexico. Thank you for being on the program this morning.
Always a treat, Zeb, anytime, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, appreciate it. She tells it like it is, and of course, I've got that copy of her book, Energy Freedom, right here in front of me, and I always thank her for coming on the show, telling it honestly. I appreciate that. Oh my goodness, I got to get the weather forecast in here. Old Wheels is chomping on the bit over there, and the weather's brought to you this hour by Roggi Auctions. And their big spring community sales coming up on April 9th, don't forget that, April 9th, and they're now taking consignments for that big spring community sale, and you'd better consign early to get on the sale bill. Whether it's farm equipment, livestock equipment, weapons, ammunition, ATVs, side-by-sides, they will not be accepting household items for this sale. This is a quality sale, quality sale. Get ahold of Roggi Auctions, call Ron Roggi at 431-6187, or Cade Roggi at 431-0074, Jade South, Corey Rogers, all of those folks, or go to roggiauction.com, and get your consignments for the big spring community sale, April 9th. Hey, by the way, right now, here's the weather forecast.
It's Tuesday, March 8th, and this is what our weather's going to look like for today. Partly cloudy skies, little bit on the breezy side, winds out of the clouds, like right around 12 miles an hour. Expect a high of 51, tonight low of 35. More clouds rolling into the valley in the overnight hours, that's going to leave us with cloudy skies for tomorrow, high of 54, with an overnight low of 38. And then warming up for Thursday and Friday, partly cloudy skies, slightly breezy highs are going to be in the mid-60s. Yesterday's high was 51, the overnight low was 30. That's your weather for Zeb's Ranch.
Very well done, and sponsored by Roggi Auctions. Spring Community Sale coming up on April 9th. Get your consignments in now, call to get them on the sale bill. Ron Roggi, Cade Roggi, Jade South, Corey Rogers, all of those folks, working on this great big April 9th Spring Community Sale. Be sure and get ahold of them today. Oh my goodness sakes, calls are welcome and appreciated, 436-2244-1866-9274587. Like to hear what you have to say about any and all of the topics that we've discussed this morning. And let's see, what else have I got here on my little list? I talked to you about microaggressions, you know, this is really insane. These microaggressions now, you know, we laughed at this. We laughed it off. We made ridicule of these people that thought they were so much better than the rest of us, that they were going to eliminate certain words and phrases from our everyday routine and speaking to each other. It's not funny anymore. It's not funny anymore when you have our United States State Department, warning employees that microaggressions may count as harassment, and you may end up losing your job, or maybe even further going to court, for using simple phrases like, "holding down the fort," or "rule of thumb," or referring to us as Americans, or saying that America is the land of opportunity. These people, these elites, that absolutely need a good stiff kick in the butt, are trying to take away our freedom of speech, our First Amendment, they're trying to make us all channeled into little yes and no, men and women are leading the charge. And if the State Department is going to send out an edict to their employees, "Thou shalt not say this, or you will be up on charges of discrimination and microaggression," how scary is our society becoming? Saying Merry Christmas to someone might be construed as a microaggression, or just saying to someone that is of Asian background, "Where are you from? What is wrong with that?" But today, it's considered that you can't say anything. Caller, good morning, you're on the air, quickly, I've got a minute and a half. Talk to me, caller, go.
Yeah, yeah, you was talking about climate change. I've seen a lot of it in my day.
Well, you-
I've seen it when it was way below zero, and the snow was so deep, it couldn't melt past my place here.
You have seen, you have seen a lot of climate change, and you know, Fred, I'm glad you brought that up, because the climate is always changing, and you talk about harsh winters in the past, well, we've had harsh winters now, and the climate and God's hand has always been on the thermostat.
Yeah, I've seen it, so deep, the snow was coming out as deep as my, near my house, across this highway.
Absolutely.
It had to come down the horses, and slowly from out there, to get the mail. When you talk about climate change-
Absolutely, absolutely. Fred, I got to go to the news, but it's so good to hear from you again. Thank you for calling, my dear friend.
We bet.
God bless you, thank you.
It's good to hear from you.
Oh, thank you very much, dear friend.
I've been listening to you every morning, haven't written a copy.
All right, God bless you, Fred, thanks so much. Hey, I want to say to Fred and Joyce, they are really some of our best friends, thank you so much. Hey, don't forget all the great buys that are going on, Atlee's Furniture, Floors and More. Oh my goodness sakes, recliners, they got a huge selection of recliners, you can save up to 50%. They've got those lift recliners, too. And don't forget, they've got all your bedroom pieces, oh my goodness, you can save up to 40%. Dining room, you can save up to 50% on all the dining room bar stools, and all the dinettes. I mean, wow, what savings, wow, what quality furniture, Atlee's Furniture, Floors and More. Stop in today, see Jason and the crew at 459 Overland and Burley, or give them a call right now, 878-2341. Lee's Furniture, Floors and More. Take a break, Dr. History, coming up next half hour, don't go away. Zeb's Ranch, I'll be right back. Oh wow, hour number three on a Tuesday, what does that mean? Well, Dr. History is lurking, he's lurking around the corner. Zeb's Ranch, I'm Zeb Bell, with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Lushwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you, along with some of our great advertisers, including Western Waste Services, always at your disposal. Call, get on the route service today, get rid of your garbage, 734-6969. Hey, by the way, too, I want to remind you about our dear friend Doug, at Doug's Alternator and Starter Repair, 635 21st Street, El Fesco Road, in Hayburn. Hey, I'm telling you, this old boy, this old boy, old Doug can rebuild starters, alternators, generators, he can fix everything from lawnmowers to choo-choo trains, and he sells brand-new, too. Open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, he can help you. Doug's Alternator and Starter Repair, in Hayburn, 878-4991. Let us now go to the studio, and in the studio, over across the woods and through the creek, we have Dr. History, brought to you by Minnacashia Sales, at 1321 East Main Street, in Burley. Zach and the rest of the crew, holy smokes, did you know that they've got lots and lots, and rolls and rolls of really good quality carpet? Hmm, going to be doing some improvement at your home, maybe some remodeling? You stop in and see Zach and the crew at Minnacashia Sales, 1321 East Main Street, in Burley. And right now, without further ado, here he is, that silver-throated Doctor of History.
Good morning, how you doing today, Zeb?
I am wonderful, my friend, thank you.
Good, good. Before we get into this, just want to remind our listeners that we can be found on iTunes now.
Uh-huh.
So if they don't go to our web pages, they can find us on the podcasts of iTunes.
How do they go about finding you specifically, or I should say us?
I think they can actually type in "education" podcasts, or "history" podcasts.
I see.
And then I think we come up in that list somehow.
Okay, all right, well, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
And now, not only with iTunes, but also on the internet, 112 countries are listening to us.
Yeah, it's great. So today, I'm going to spellbind you with a story about a man that I'm going to bet nobody, nobody has ever heard of.
So you're going to spellbind me?
I'm going to spellbind you.
And who is this illustrious person?
Well, it's quite a fantastic name, Thomas Smith.
Oh, there's a name you never hear.
Never hear. Born October 10th, 1801, at Crab Orchard, Kentucky.
Oh.
Crab Orchard, Kentucky.
Kentucky's got some great names back there, they really do.
Yeah, he was the fourth of nine children. He became a legendary idol figure when he opened and ran a trading post along the Bear River, from 1842 through 1857.
Really, how'd he get here?
Well, we're going to get to that.
I figured you would.
Yes. So as a young boy, he wanted west, he spent his first winter alone, in Natchez, Mississippi, where he worked for room and board at a riverside tavern. And there, he used his knife to knife a riverman during a drunken brawl, and fled, seeking refuge among the Osage Indians.
Really?
Yeah, so that was his first kind of heading west thing.
Wow.
Well, within two years, he had established a good liquor business among the Indians, but soon tired of that, and joined an upriver expedition with French trapper, Antoine Robidoux.
And what river was it?
I believe it's the Mississippi.
I see.
Well, it doesn't say, actually, but anyway, I think, no, I think it's the Missouri.
Okay.
Just guessing.
Didn't mean to get you.
Anyway, several years later, he showed up with the Ashley and Henry Expedition to explore the Upper Yellowstone. Within two months, Smith showed his bravery fighting in the famed Rickara Battle of 1823. By September 1824, Smith and other Ashley trappers were in the land of the Utes and Shoshone in the Green River area, and here, he and his party were attacked by Ute Indians. Now, one of Smith's men was killed, and the furs and mules were all stolen.
Uh-oh.
Now, this is where it gets interesting. Smith, along with two members of his party, pursued the Indians on foot. On the second day, they boldly walked into the center of the Ute camp. Smith, shouting loudly in the Ute dialect, stated that the Indians had made a very bad mistake by stealing their mules and furs.
He wasn't the brightest bulb in the starter fixture, was he?
But here's what happened. It was fortunate, Smith yelled, that he had located the Utes in time, since no harm would now come to them if they immediately returned the stolen goods.
Three guys.
Three guys, in the middle of the camp.
In the middle of a camp.
Yeah.
And they, the three guys, said no harm would come to the Indians.
Right. So the Ute Indians stood dumbfounded, as you can imagine, at the bravery of the three trappers, especially the loud and courageous Smith. So the Indians not only returned the mules and furs to the trappers, but invited them to remain in the safety of their camp, and trap the fertile beaver area through that whole winter.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you mean to tell me the Indians, and I'm not trying to be derogatory, they were that dumb to buy that three guys were going to make demands?
Well, that's the way it happened. So, and now, actually, the Utes named this guy Smith, they called him Big Friend.
Big Friend.
That's how they nicknamed him.
Uh-huh.
So, anyway, Thomas Smith, along with Milton Sublet, who is a name we know, joined a trapping expedition in 1827. During the expedition, they were attacked by Indians, two of the trappers were killed in the ambush. Now, while Smith was attempting to retrieve the bodies of his friends, he was hit in the left ankle by a rifle ball.
Ooh.
Blowing his right foot right out from under him. Well, Smith hobbled a few steps on this jagged bone, and then fell to the ground in agony, and he remained there while the battle raged on.
Ah.
Now, after nine Indians had fallen dead, the fighting ceased, and the ambushers retreated. Smith was carried a mile to a safer place, where he was given whiskey to ease his pain. His wound was not tended, since his companions thought that, well, he's just going to die anyway, saw no point in wasting good liquor, or wasting time on this guy.
Holy smokes, kind of a cruel bunch, weren't they?
You know, this might be a good time for a break.
You know, we have a quick call, I'm going to see if this is in regards to the program. Caller, go ahead, quickly, your question.
They hung up, sir, I guess they wanted to listen instead.
All right, that's good, thank you very much. We're going to do a quick break, and come back with more of why Mr. Smith got shot in the ankle, you said? And they gave him up for dead?
Yeah.
Hmm, interesting, stand by. Don't forget Minnacashia Sales, 1321 East Main Street, in Burley, with Zach and the whole crew. Hey, not only the carpet, but also all the lumber for remodeling chores you've got set up for this spring, all your roofing material, and don't forget the upgrade of your windows, with the western windows, and oh my goodness, all the Tarter Farm and Ranch gates and panels, the very best. I'm telling you, these folks really care, and they can help you, they will help you, at Minnacashia Sales, 1321 East Main Street, in Burley. And now, back to, why did they leave Mr. Smith to die with a ankle all shot to pieces?
Okay, well, you know, like I said, they didn't want to waste any time- Okay, well, you know, like I said, they didn't want to waste any time helping him. So finally-
Nice guy.
The angered, half-delirious Smith leveled his rifle at the camp cook and ordered a sterilized butcher knife to be brought to him.
Uh-huh.
With this, he began sawing away the jagged portions of the ankle, meat and bone.
Wait a minute, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. You just made a very, very, uh, kind of a prickly feeling go up my back. This guy operated on his own ankle?
Well, he passed out from the pain before he had severed the Achilles tendon. So Milton Sublet finished the job, kinda scoring the jagged bone as best as he could. Now, we talked about these guys being tough.
Uh-huh.
So, and it doesn't end there. Uh, with a leg stub swathed in twists of tobacco and bound with a ragged shirt, Smith was dragged along on a crude horse-drawn litter.
Now, did they cut the ankle, the foot off?
Yeah, it's gone.
They cut the foot off?
Yeah, it's gone. Okay. So they drew, uh, he was on this litter for over 150 miles, been on this horse-drawn litter. Now, during the two weeks that Smith was dragged about, the trappers went about their daily routine. Uh, Milton Sublet saw to it that he had food and water. Now, as you can imagine, gangrene and infection set in.
Oh my goodness.
And the leg ballooned to a huge proportion. By this time, Smith was unconscious.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Now, sensing that was mere hours before their companion's death, uh, the trapping party left him with a group of Ute Indians who, uh, had made their summer camp nearby. So now he's with these, with the Ute Indians.
He got left with the Indians.
Yeah.
And he's got gangrene.
Yeah, and infection. So under their care, Smith survived.
What about his leg?
Well, I'm gonna get to that. As he recuperated, he carved a wooden limb. And through hours of practice, he learned to be as agile as any two-legged man. In later years, however, he taught his horse to lie down so that he could mount with ease. Okay? Now, the name Big Friend was now replaced with Wooden Leg among his Indian friends. His trapper friends called him Peg Leg.
Peg Leg.
Peg Leg Smith now, okay?
Peg Leg Smith.
Okay. So anyway, one of Peg Leg's Ute friends was Chief Wakera. And you've probably heard of him.
Yeah.
But it was through Smith's marriage to Wakera's sister that he was adopted into the Ute tribe.
You're going too fast for him.
I know. It goes fast. But one of the tribal members, a guy by the name of Wolfkill, accompanied Smith to California, which was still under Spanish control.
Now, he's riding all this way with the wooden leg.
Yeah, yeah. So with beaver pelts, the two purchased horses, which were trailed back home and sold at Fort Bridger for a really nice profit. Well, it didn't take long for Peg Leg to figure out that a lot bigger profits could be made if the horses could be had for nothing. Now, that makes sense. Cuts down on your overhead. Anyway, his personal code of ethics dictated that a man did not take that which did not belong to him.
Yeah.
So Smith returned to California only to fall under the spell of liquor, which was his custom, ended up in jail, which was another custom of his. When he was released, minus his horse and possessions, he met up with a small group of trappers who had met with similar fate.
Hold on a second. This guy goes to California, he was given the opportunity, bad as it was, to steal some horses.
Yeah.
And then he ends up in jail.
Right.
And all of this with the wooden leg, and they could hear him coming five blocks away, ka-thunk, 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 ka-thunk.
Well, he was determined not to leave a foot, so to speak.
Ah.
The small group helped themselves, they helped themselves to a few horses, about 25 head each. So that probably 150 horses.
Yeah.
And they high-tailed it to the Rockies, brought them up here. The escapade was so simple and so profitable that Smith tossed away his moral ethics and decided to take horse thieving as a full-time occupation.
They hang people for that.
Well, you know, anyway, uh, everybody's gotta do something. So he talked-
Yeah, you became a chiropractor.
That's right. Well, he talked Wakera's braves and several trappers into joining his new business venture. Now, during his next trip into California in 1830, Smith and his group gathered over 600 horses.
Wow.
Okay.
All at one time?
Yeah. Now, Smith's herd had re, his own herd had reproduced and grown fat and sleek, and Peg Leg had become restless with his lot in life. So in 1840, he planned another horse raiding raid. Uh, a large group of Indians were recruited and the raid commenced. Over 5,000 horses were gathered. But this time, the thieves were pursued by the Spanish, their army, so to speak.
They didn't like that.
No. A lot of the horses died as they were herded across the Mojave Desert at top speed.
Yeah.
And for many years, their bones marked the route that they had taken. Now-
So all of this can be verified in history?
Oh, yes. Everything I say is true.
Uh-huh.
Right?
Where they chuckle.
Yes, okay. Well, when the group reached a water hole, actually Barstow, California.
I've been there.
You've been there.
Oh, that's, you don't find many water holes out there.
Well, Smith divided his men, sending half on with the stock, while the other half waited in ambush. Well, the Spaniards, in their haste to reach the needed water, they were taken by surprise. Eighty fell beneath the shots of Smith and his crew, and the survivors retreated back from where they'd come.
How many, how many guys did Smith have with him?
Not very, well, it doesn't really tell us exactly how many.
Oh.
But not that many. So anyway, about 2,800 horses made it to their new Idaho home.
2,800?
Yeah, that's a lot of horses. So, anyway, Peg Leg Smith's previous raid had, uh, held not only profit, but excitement. Uh, he liked that. So Peg Leg, he was chomping at the bit for another raid, and he set the next one for November 1841. So by late October, Wakera's braves were gathering for this big event. They were gonna go with him. Um, however, the Spanish were determined not to suffer the losses they had in the previous year's raid. So the governor, his name was Victoria, doubled the size of his garrisons, began strict surveillance all along the borders. Any suspicious spies or informers were actually hung. So there were probably guys hung that were perfectly innocent.
And this is while California was still a territory of Mexico.
Yeah. Now, four men who were caught driving stolen horses were ca, each, I hate to say this, they were each tied by their arms and legs to different horses and pulled apart.
Um, thank you for being so graphic this morning.
Anyway, Governor Victoria formed his own spy system and passed a new law that any trapper found crossing the border would have their pelts confiscated and would be heavily fined. One of the trappers arrested and fined was Milton Sublet. And he lost over $35,000 in pelts. Now, in 1840, 35,000, you know?
That's like-
At least 3 million maybe, I don't know.
Oh my goodness, yes.
So, okay, so on November-
So, so Sublet wasn't, uh, as good a guy as we think he was?
No, he was okay.
He was okay.
Yeah, he wasn't on the raids. He was just trapping.
He was just going through there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on November 3rd, a Border Patrol found numerous horse tracks. The alarm was immediately spread to nearby ranches, missions and garrisons. And soon the Spaniards were aware of every move that Peg Leg's raiders made.
I got a question for you. There had to be some honest horse traders back in those days. What did they do without brands, uh, as a certificate or something to prove that they owned them?
I don't think they even worried about that. You know, back then, you could move a horse from here to there.
So you could-
Just sell it.
You could get pulled apart when you didn't do anything wrong.
Exactly, yeah.
Where's John? Well, he's laying over there and John's over there.
And over there. But anyway, for eight days, the unsuspecting Smith and his men roamed the Spanish-held countryside. They caught about 200 horses. And after sweeping a large area, the disgusted raiders began heading for their meager, uh, heading their meager take across the Mojave Desert again. Now, when Peg Leg and his men reached the watering hole where they had lain in ambush back there at Barstow against the Spaniards a year earlier, they found themselves under similar attack.
Uh-oh.
So less than half of Smith's men got out alive. Peg Leg was grazed across the ribs. His horse was shot out from under him, but he escaped.
Now, wait a minute, a guy with a wooden leg, you're not gonna set a record for being a track star?
No, but he moved pretty, he escaped. And anyway, only 40 Spanish horses were brought back into Idaho.
I see. Okay.
But anyway, shortly after Smith's last horse thief fiasco, immigrants began crossing the Oregon Trail, part of which passed right by Peg Leg's door on the Bear River.
Yeah.
Okay. So Smith hastily erected a trading post and began doing some horse trading.
Now, was that over at Montpelier or over in the Preston area?
Yeah, over, uh, he just says the Bear Lake area. So Bear River. But anyway, he stocked his post with supplies, uh, and he would exchange some of his fine Spanish horses for some of the horses that were worn out. Uh, but the Indians and the white men traded at Smith. He sold whiskey colored with plugs of tobacco and watered down four times to his white customers. He watered down the plug-colored whiskey six times for his Indian customers.
Mm-hmm.
And each paid $1 per pint.
Hmm.
So I'm thinking that was quite a bit. But Peg Leg was often paid in furs at the rate of $2.50 a pound, which he then sold in Missouri for about $7.50 a pound. So more than, he tripled his money on the furs that he bought. So now, here's another little trick that he did.
He must've went to Trump University.
He did. He, he, when he dealt in pinches of gold, you know, you'd take a pinch of gold to pay for something?
Yeah.
Well, he had a, a large gold nugget, nugget around his neck, uh, attached. And what he would do is he would take his thumb and press on that nugget real hard for maybe 30 seconds or a minute. And which would create an indentation in his thumb.
Oh.
So when he went to take that pinch of gold, he probably got twice as much as a real pinch of gold.
You know, these guys were not stupid.
No. He, he, he did well.
Yeah.
If not honest, anyway. Horses, you know, however, afforded Peg Leg the greatest profits. And travelers paid as much as $200 for one of his green-broke Spanish horses.
Really?
And they were required to leave him with a worn-out but well-broke, uh, mounted horse.
Yeah.
And within weeks, the worn-out horse was sleek and looking good and ready to sell for $200 to the next guy that came along.
This guy was an entrepreneur.
Well, he really was. So in the course of a decade, Peg Leg Smith, uh, grew wealthy off his trading post, which was in operation from 1842 through 1857. So, in about 15 years. And he boasted profits of $100 a day. Now-
Now, that is a lot of money.
That is.
In those days.
So, but travelers enjoyed the amenities of Smith's fort. They found this, uh, they found white bread, salt, pepper, brandy, milk, beef, pork, flour, bacon, butter, and winter season, fresh vegetables. And they also found this kind of portly balding, round-faced Peg Leg, uh, kind of an amusing character to have around the campfire, you know, telling stories. So, but anyway, 1819, Thomas Smith lived among the Osage Indians with his wife, who was an Osage woman.
Yeah. Now, we're going back a little bit, right?
Yeah, we're going back a ways. So-
You got three minutes.
Okay, I've got one page.
Okay.
Anyway, Smith's first recorded marriage took place around 1824 to a woman named Mountain Fawn. This with the Ute sister of Chief Wakera.
I see.
Okay, now, follow this closely.
Oh, I am, I'm listening.
Okay. Peg Leg was thus officially adopted into the Ute tribe. Several months following the marriage, he joined the Utes in a battle against the Shoshone. His bravery so impressed his Ute brothers that he was given all the wives he wanted.
Uh-oh.
He only took three or four.
I see.
So now we're up to, I think, five wives.
Yeah, you know taxes and everything.
So when Smith went on his horse-thieving forays, uh, he left his Ute wives, uh, and his offspring behind.
Uh-huh.
Well, during the construction of his trading post along the banks of the Bear River, Peg Leg visited Fort Hall, which is not very far from us.
Mm-mm.
For some supplies. But he brought home another wife, a young Bannock woman.
Oh, this might be a bad deal.
This is, you'll see.
Okay.
So later that same year, Smith went east with fur bundles to trade in Missouri. When he returned to his post, he had with him a pretty Crow woman.
Oh my-
Which he explained to his jealous wives that he had won in a poker game. Wife number one, Mountain Fawn, did not like this. The two women got in a knife fight. The young Crow overpowered the older Ute, Mountain Fawn woman. She fell dead. So Peg Leg carried the body of Mountain Fawn. I think she was his favorite.
I'm, I'm trying to follow this.
Okay, carried-
Okay. Wife number one got literally-
Killed-
The axe.
Yes, by wife number six.
Yeah.
Anyway, he carried her toward Bear Lake where she was buried in an upright position so that she could look out across the water. When he returned to the post, all but his Crow wife had packed up and left.
So he lost all of his wives?
He lost everybody except the Crow.
Except the Crow?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, anyway, he died a pauper on October 15th, 1866, in the San Francisco County Hospital.
In California?
In California. Now, how he got there from Idaho, I have no idea.
And how did he lose all of his holdings, though?
I, alimony? I don't know.
And that's the story.
That's the story of Peg Leg Thomas Smith.
Holy-
1801 to 1866.
And he died broke?
65, died.
And what'd you say he passed away from?
Didn't, didn't say.
One of the wives caught him.
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway, I'll bet, I'm just guessing, nobody's heard of Peg Leg Smith, Thomas Smith.
I didn't know all that myself. I'd never heard of the guy.
No. I, that's why I kinda liked that story.
You know what? You do a great job. And, uh, even after all that, we're still heard in 112 countries.
Yeah.
And on-
iTunes.
iTunes.
Just look for us there.
Okay, we're all over.
We are.
We're like what's laying out in the corral.
That's right.
We're all over.
All over the place.
Dr. History, brought to you by our dear friends at Minnichasha Sales, 1321 East Main Street in Burley. You stop in and see Zach and the whole crew today, right across from the airport, or give them a call at 878-2091. Well, as Dr. History is wrapping things up and putting it back in his briefcase, I want to remind you too, that, uh, on Thursdays, we have a segment called Cache County School Days. And our thanks go out to two wonderful sponsors, Ambulatory Surgery Center, and of course, 1344 Highland Avenue in Burley. Number to call, 677-8888. For your outpatient surgeries at the Ambulatory Surgery Center, and they can save you literally hundreds of dollars. Give them a call, 677-8888. And A Child's World at 1308 Overland and Burley. Stop in. All the spring clothing is there. Oh, let's get springy in our ideas and our concepts. Don't forget, they've got all the games, the puzzles, all kinds of fun, along with the Cherokee scrubs, all that you need at A Child's World. 1308 Overland in Burley, with Ambulatory Surgery Center, bringing you School Days in Cache County on Thursdays, and of course, 10:10. Right now, we're gonna send it back over to our main studios. We'll be back in about three minutes. Don't you go away.
And now, back to Zeb at the Ranch on AM 1230 KBAR. To reach Zeb, call 436-2244, or toll-free 1-866-927-4587. And now, here is Zeb Bell.
You know, we are in the middle of not only the most interesting, I think, in my lifetime, uh, political season and political candidacy I think I've ever heard of or seen, uh, on both sides of the aisle. Whether it's the liberal left with Bernie Sanders and Hillary, or whether it's the GOP right. And we're really getting down to crunch time. Getting down to crunch time as to where and when we're gonna make our final selections. And really, America and its value system are at stake, I think, in this next election. And with us on the program again today is a man that's been here quite often in the last couple of weeks, John Zamirac. Good morning, John. How are you?
I apologize, sir, but I can't get him on the phone.
You can't get him on that number?
I can't. It just went to the voicemail, but I did leave a message.
All right, you keep trying.
Okay.
All right, buddy. Thanks. Appreciate it. Well, after all that, John's not with us. And, uh, so evidently, something ran afoul. And we're gonna turn this into an open forum for right now, which means, please call. I haven't got a thing for this half hour, so I'll look forward to hearing from you. And give us a jingle on the landline, 436-2244-1866-9274587. Uh, dear friend of mine, Jack Euler. And Jack, if you're listening out there in radio land this morning, uh, I called Jack last night over an email that came to my office yesterday, and I'm very, very worried about it. The headline of this email was, "United States Fish and Wildlife Service Ups the Standards to Better Protect Wildlife." And this was put out by a person by the name of Chandler Clay with the Environmental Defense Fund. Very spooky and very telling about what changes might be coming down the line. Caller, good morning, you're on the air. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Zeb. Uh, it's not to sidetrack you, but your last guest, Dr. History, watch, listen to that. That's really great information you always get from him. But, you know, think about, you talk about how strong and tough them old guys were back then. That's an understatement. talk about how strong and tough them old guys were back then, that's an understatement. I mean, to cut your own leg up and try to doctor it yourself, full conscience?
Well, and the thing is that we have to keep in perspective, whether all these tall tales or whether it's actual history, you never know, but they didn't have an emergency room to run to, they didn't have an urgent care to go to, they didn't have anybody but really their own being and their own personality to take care of themselves in most all situations. So they had to be tough, or the alternative was just die.
Be tough or die, you know, and that goes right down to what I think about nowadays. People got soft. I mean, nowhere, I don't think I could do that, but put in the situation maybe, but you know, the society as a whole has kind of got soft.
Yeah, but you know what?
Into the elections we have now today, where people are hoping to have, so some people, I can't imagine why, would want Bernie Sanders to provide every last little thing.
Yeah, yeah. You know, never sell yourself short, though. I will say this, that a person doesn't know how tough they will be or won't be until they're faced with a certain circumstance or situation, and you never want to sell yourself short. The instinct for survival is very strong, and you don't want to say that you wouldn't do something because you don't know.
Yeah, that is a fact. It'd take off real hard to, yeah, something pretty bad, but anyway.
All right, sir.
Mention that, talk to you later.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. You know, I've, I've got a lot of faith in mankind, and I've got a lot of faith in the abilities that God gave us to be tough, and you never want to sell yourself short. I heard somebody clearing their throat. What does that mean, fearless wheels?
Um, I, I did text you, but I got John on the phone for you.
Very good, very good. Good morning. John Zemirak, and we're going to talk politics a little bit for this half hour. John, thanks for coming back on the program. How are you this morning?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm sorry I was awake and you.
Not a problem, we've got everything covered. You know, John, let me say this, there has been so much rhetoric thrown out in front of the American public, whether it's with old bingo Bernie and providing free educations and free everything, or Hillary, of course, saying that she's going to advocate the same kind of philosophy that Obama's had for the last eight years, or whether it's Trump with his very hard stance on immigration, Rubio, Cruz, Kasich. Man alive, how do you pilfer through all that's being said and try to come up with any kind of a format as to what they really adhere to? What are, what are your thoughts about this next election?
Well, you asked a broad question. I'll give you a fairly narrow answer. I think, I think it's extremely important who the Republicans nominate, because I think Hillary Clinton will, will get the nomination and will be a very weak nominee and would be an appalling and destructive president. And I think that the Bernie Sanders candidacy has pushed her even further to the left than she already was, and she will be stuck with, with those promises that she's made to basically transform America into one of, a European socialist country inundated by a multicultural influx from the Third World.
Okay.
I think that is a recipe for disaster.
I totally.
Like we're seeing in Germany today.
I totally agree with you, John, but now I answer this question. With everything you said about Hillary, and everything that can be said about Bernie Sanders, it's amazing to me, the millions and millions of people that will follow in lockstep, especially like what I saw at that town hall gathering last night. Why? Can't they see through this facade of liberalism that somebody, somewhere, somehow has got to pay the bill?
Because, I think it's a function of, of our decline, our cultural decline. People have not grown up with a sense of responsibility for themselves. Their parents don't make them work for their allowance, their colleges don't make them work for their financial aid, they don't really expect to have to work to earn a living. They feel entitled. They're entitled to a comfortable living provided by somebody else, by the government, by the 1%. And I think that is to some degree, I work on the Trump phenomenon too. People feel entitled to live in a successful country that's winning. They feel entitled to prosperity, but they don't want to work very hard either. So that's why I, I, I find it profoundly depressing, how many Americans, if you added up the core of Trump supporters and the core Sanders and Hillary supporters, you know, that, that's, it tells me that the, the number of Americans who really hold to the honest vision of our founders is a minority, and that minority needs to wake up and take action and needs to defend this wonderful political and economic system we inherited from men like George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, John Adams, Alexander Hamilton. We need to wake up to the virtues that the founders considered absolutely essential to a successful democratic republic. That's why I'm excited about Ted Cruz as a candidate, because to me, Ted Cruz actually embodies those virtues and actually clings to the real meaning of the Constitution and the genuine principles of the conservative movement.
All right, now, that being said, I know you're an advocate of Ted Cruz, and quite frankly, I'm not going to argue your position on this whatsoever. I personally came out and endorsed Cruz the other day on my program, but what is the attraction with Trump? Even though Trump does not really explain his position, Trump does not really tell everybody where he's headed, especially whether it's on immigration or whether it's on the economy, what is the attraction for him and on the other side, also Hillary? Why are people blindly following each candidate?
Well, I, I don't want to get into Hillary's, because I think I've explained that, that's the entitlement mentality.
Right, right.
Um, with, with Trump, I think people are legitimately outraged at the way that Republican elites, the donor class, the people on K Street, and the congressmen and senators who are willing to be bought by those people, the contemptuous way in which they've treated the Republican base. We've seen no progress on abortion, we see, we've been pushed back on gay marriage and religious liberty. Our gun, we're one vote away from losing our right to firearms, and the Republicans just seem to be fiddling while Rome burns. You see that, that absurd budget deal that Paul Ryan signed, which paid for Obama's executive amnesty, it seems clear that the Republicans who have been in power want to make a lot of noise and complain about Obama, but whenever it comes to a showdown, they surrender. So who needs them? What's the point of them? Burn it all down, people say, and Donald Trump is a can of gasoline and a match to burn it all down. I think that's the explanation. The Republican Party establishment deserves Donald Trump. I don't think America deserves Donald Trump. I don't deserve Donald Trump.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm assuming that your fears are quite a bit like mine, that Donald Trump is like a great big dirigible filled with hot air that has made all kinds of promises, we're going to make America great again without much definition, and right now, the American public is fed up with the job consuming politicians that have done nothing back to the masses. So what are we going to do to stop this? And what happens if he is elected? My goodness, are we going to adhere to our Constitution or to a new Trump rule?
I do worry about that. If you see what total wussies the Republicans have been standing up to Obama, do you really think they're going to stand up to, to Trump if he's their own president? Do you really think they're going to resist his attempts to subvert the Constitution? They wouldn't do it with Obama, and he was allegedly the other party. So I mean, that's why I, in some ways, I think a Trump presidency would be more dangerous than a Bernie Sanders presidency.
Now, when you say.
Bernie Sanders, a proclaimed socialist, these things, you could count on some Republicans to stand up against them. So I, again, I think Donald Trump is an extremely dangerous con man.
Okay, let's talk immigration for a minute, in regards to the piece that you wrote, very, very good piece about Trump and immigration, the New York Times, et cetera. You know, building a wall, I have always advocated. I think that a wall is needed, I think we need much, much stricter border concentration on the North and the South, but what are your, what are your feelings about this wall and with Donald Trump and not releasing what was said in private with the New York Times?
Yeah, I think Donald Trump is scamming the Republican Party, the way he scams the buyers of Trump steak and Trump vodka, and the customers of Trump University, and the Trump Pyramid scheme that he, that he, that he ran called the Trump Network. I think he's telling the voters whatever they want to hear, and behind the scenes, off the record, off the record, he told New York Times editors what he thought they wanted to hear, and now he doesn't want the voters to hear what he told the New York Times editors in a secret meeting in Manhattan. If Donald Trump is, is somebody who shoots from the head and speaks his mind, why is he keeping secrets from Republican voters?
You know, when you listen to the former and the current President of Mexico, they have come out and used profanity laced statements against Donald Trump, and I haven't not heard them talk about Cruz or Rubio or Kasich. What do you take from their very, very profane statements about Donald Trump and his possible presidency?
Uh, I, I think they haven't studied the issue very well. They don't, they, they're not paying close attention, you know? I don't pay close attention to the Mex, to Mexican politics, they don't pay close attention to ours. They hear the most outrageous things that Trump throws out to, to the voters as, as bait, and they take them at face value. They, they don't know that four years ago, Donald Trump was condemning Mitt Romney for being too hard on immigration. He called Mitt Romney's plan to cut off public assistance to illegal immigrants, he said it was maniacal, and after 2012, he blamed the opposition to immigration for, for the Republican defeat. Four years ago, Donald Trump was denouncing anyone who sounded like Donald Trump, but he's changed, has he changed his mind, or has he just changed his costume? Has he just changed his sales pitch? I, I just have absolutely no reason to believe that Donald Trump would appoint pro-life, pro-Second Amendment justices to the court. I don't believe he built a wall, or if he did, he put a Rubio revolving door in it. I, I just don't think there's any reason to believe this man, who has, who has violated two marriages, gone bankrupt four times, fleeced a bunch of investors and customers. If you would have just, if, I wouldn't buy a, a used car from this man. I certainly don't want him to have our nuclear codes.
Let me ask you this, John, and I know you study this, and I know you've also got a call coming in.
That's not for me, don't worry about it.
Okay. John, but when you look at the entirety of this situation with all the different debates and everything else, has the media really left the American public out to dry on the clothesline by not asking more and being more aggressive about immigration and other policies? Have they dropped the ball?
I think, I think the media, there are two things going on with the media, with Trump. First of all, he's great for ratings, and they, they're loving it, and so they're just treating him in a way with kid gloves. Secondly, more than 90% of journalists are liberal Democrats and pro-choice, at least pro-choice. I think that they have stuff on Trump. I think they have devastating stuff on Trump. I've seen rumors about this among liberal reporters. They have devastating stuff on Trump, but they're saving it till after he gets the nomination. They don't want Republicans to know all the ammunition they have against Trump. They want to wait till we're stuck with him, and then they will unload it. And, and believe me, when the left, when the media goes after Trump, once he's the nominee, if that happens, God forbid, they will obliterate him. Between Democrat attack ads and left wing reporters, Donald Trump will be lucky to get 25% of the vote in a general election. It will be the most catastrophic Republican defeat. It'll make Barry Goldwater look, look like Ronald Reagan.
Yeah, but when you say that, though, John, you also have to, I think, incorporate into your last phrase, America's in a no win situation. Trump and/or Hillary, we're not going to win as a populace, we're going to be driven further down the tube.
I completely agree. That's why I think it's essential to stop Trump from being the nominee. I think that the battle for America is being fought right now, and I think we need to stop Donald Trump from being the nominee. I, I don't, I don't think Rubio or Kasich would be good nominees either, which leaves us with Ted Cruz, who I think is a good and honorable man. A lot of people don't like his speaking style, or the way he smiles, or his hair, and they're voting on that. People who vote based on that, basically, they deserve somebody like Donald Trump. But I don't, you don't, and America doesn't.
Well, let me ask you this, then, if you were Cruz's campaign manager, you are now being anointed as having that job. In hindsight, what did Cruz not do or not do good enough to where he should be better than Trump right now, going into another Super Tuesday?
Um, I think he probably should have attacked Trump sooner. He should have been more aggressive at the debates. He should talk about something beyond, he talks too much about the Constitution and about somewhat arcane points of immigration policy. I think he needs to talk more to the conservative heart, he needs to talk a little more like Reagan. I think he needs to offer Rubio the vice presidential slot and get him out of the race.
Now, what about the Republican establishment? They don't like Trump, that's a gimme, but on the other hand, the Republican establishment, they don't like Cruz either. They've hated that man ever since he gave his filibuster in front of the Senate. What are your thoughts? Will he finally get these people back on his side?
Um, I think some of them will pick Trump over Cruz, because Trump, because Cruz is actually a solid principled conservative, whereas Trump is malleable, in the words of Bob Dole. Bob Dole, remember last summer, said he preferred Trump to Cruz. Do you get much more Republican establishment than Bob Dole? He prefers Donald Trump. What does that tell you about the secret preferences of the Republican establishment? Politically, they are closer to Trump. They just have come to believe that Trump is unelectable. They, they, they see that, those Klan associations, those pictures of Donald Trump having his supporters raise their right hands in what the Democrat commercials will make look like Nazi salutes. Donald Trump has said and done too many things, they have finally realizing they can't win with Donald Trump. The Republican establishment is still clinging to their little fantasy that Marco Rubio is going to somehow magically be the nominee, and if they cling to that much longer, they're going to end up with Donald Trump.
Let me ask you, final thought here this morning, John, if this thing goes to convention, and it is a fractured convention, isn't that all going to aid and abet more votes and more support for Hillary on the left?
Um, I think the left is going to vote for Hillary anyway. The Democrats are going to have a very powerful election machine, they're going to churn out every vote they possibly can, they're going to be dead people voting in Illinois, no matter what the Republicans do. So what we need to do is to make sure we don't emerge from that convention with a nominee named Donald Trump. If, if Donald Trump walks off in a huff and runs third party, I think that will draw a lot of Democrat votes as well, so we can't be spooked by that. A lot of blue collar Democrats who, who would have held their nose and voted for Hillary, if Trump is on the ballot, third party, they'll vote for him. So I don't think a Donald Trump third party candidacy, obviously, I don't want it to happen, but I don't think it necessarily guarantees a Democrat victory.
Always enjoy having this gentleman on my program, John Zemirak. He had an excellent piece, Trump Admits Contents of Secret, New York Times Immigration Tape, Amnesty is Negotiable. We touched on that and many other points. John, thank you for coming back on the program, and we'll have you back in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet, take care. Very interesting gentleman, and you can definitely hear his viewpoints and understand who he's for. He's a Ted Cruz supporter over the current frontrunner, which is, of course, Donald Trump. We're going to see, it's going to get a lot dirtier in the days ahead. Holy smokes, we've got to get a weather forecast in here. Scarrow's Meats, 331 North Road, Jerome, they are changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. Don't forget, it's tax return meat bundle time. If you've got some money coming back from the government for your taxes, don't forget a super buy of 70-plus pounds of beef and pork and chicken for only $2.49 plus tax at Scarrow's Meats. It's delicious, changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. Here now is Gina with the weather.
It's Tuesday, March 8th, and this is what our weather's going to look like for today. Partly cloudy skies, little bit on the breezy side, winds out of the southwest right around 12 miles an hour, expect a high of 51, tonight low of 35. More clouds rolling into the valley in the overnight hours, that's going to leave us with cloudy skies for tomorrow, high of 54 with an overnight low of 38, and then warming up for Thursday and Friday, partly cloudy skies, slightly breezy highs are going to be in the mid 60s. Yesterday's high was 51, the overnight low was 30. That's your weather for Zeb and Trish.
I appreciate that, Gina. Thank you very much. And again, a reminder brought to you this hour by Scarrow's Meats, 331 North Road, Jerome, 324-7657. They are changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. Couple of quick notes, don't forget to go vote today. Today is primary day, and for the residents of Cache County, it's also a very, very special vote today for the Cache County School Bond Election, so make sure and go vote today. And a quick reminder, too, I had a call last night, and a gentleman said that the Cache County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet Invitations, some of them, where did they go? They don't know, they were lost, and a lot of people have been calling and inquiring. So what they said is call the Farm Bureau office at 678-0431, and if you want to go to that annual banquet tonight, be sure and tell them you want tickets, they'll have them ready for you at the door in kind of a will call situation. It's the Farm Bureau, Cache County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet tonight at the Burley Inn Best Western, starting at 6:00 PM. They'll have the various awards to pass out for Farm Woman of the Year, and the Grand Farmer Award, and the Young Farmer and Rancher Award, and speaking tonight, excuse me for the frog in my throat, will be our new and very interesting Senator, Kelly Anton, is going to be speaking tonight at the Cache County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet, 6:00 PM. There you go. Tomorrow on the program, let's take a look here real quick and see what's going to happen. Oh my goodness, we've got a lot of good people. We're going to have the open forum from 8:06 until 9:00 PM with all your questions and comments. Dave Beagle, Clark Kaufman, our representative, Josh Segal, Leiden Crane, all kinds of good folks. Caller, I've got a minute left, go ahead real fast. Caller, good morning, you're on the air, go real quick.
I'm in Cache County today, but in the newspaper this morning, there was another one popped up. It's too bad that some of these people don't know how to spend their money and take care of it like they should, and they all are in Cache County. I feel really bad about how bad we are off.
Well, I appreciate your call, your opinions are always welcome. Well, I appreciate your call, your opinions are always welcome, that's what this show's all about. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your call, thank you. And he's gone, okay. And I want to remind you that we're going to have a very, very interesting person on tomorrow morning at ten thirty, Leiden Crane, a young accountant that's going to talk about how you'd better be prepared for your tax season, which is looming in about thirty days, April fifteenth, and other people on the program tomorrow, should be a very interesting program. We'll ride the horse for three hours tomorrow morning, starting at eight oh six, and going all the way up to eleven o'clock, right here on Kbar, twelve thirty AM, and streaming live on the internet all over the world on zebbell.com, and remember, the way things were are the way things ought to be. God bless, have a great day, we'll see you tomorrow morning.